We're going to call this special comprehensive plan review work session the order.
So last time we met and discussed comprehensive plan, we went over some of the projects that you all had been interested in. And so tonight, I think, why don't we talk a little bit about what's in our comprehensive plan? And what we would maybe need to add or do. Does that sound good?
Sounds good.
Hello.
Hello.
It is... It's a full comprehensive plan. And Joe is coming. He did text me and say he was going to be just a little bit later. So our comprehensive plan was last adopted September 30th, 2021. So... We have to update it every five years? Four years? So if that's the case, then we don't have to have this adopted until next year? Is that right?
That's my understanding.
I thought it was this year.
Five years for 26 would be about here.
Does anybody not have a physical copy of the comprehensive plan?
I've got it electronically, so I'm fine.
Dave, do you?
I don't.
Dave, do you have one? Okay. We will get you guys a comprehensive plan, like a physical copy. It's a thick one.
It's only 188 pages.
Only? Only? So the planning commission actually will be the ones to make the recommendation to council for what we need to actually adopt into our comprehensive plan or what we need to take out of our comprehensive plan. So having you guys kind of reviewing it like this kind of gets us a little bit ahead of the game. And I know that I had talked with Zach about possibly setting like a subcommittee to have like maybe a member or two of this board and the planning commission committee to kind of tackle doing just that. What would you all think about that?
I talked to Joe on it to see what he thought. We were talking about other things and it came up in conversation. He recommended against it, saying, you know, it's a collective plan. I think working in larger sessions can be difficult sometimes, but that was his recommendation. I guess I'll speak for him since he's not here right now, but I don't think I've gotten anything wrong on it. But he was recommending against it, just so everybody works on it collectively.
On a quick note, I did just verify it's every five years on comprehensive plan in the tour. The last time that we adopted a full revision was 2020. The 2021 change was like two or three pages specifically for BDOT purposes that we changed things.
What do you think is most likely to change in it? I mean, the background and the analysis will... Some of those will just have refreshes on it. And like the screen you have up right now, the population isn't showing any decline over the... Since this was adopted, I guess, are those things we changed off it?
Yeah, we'll have to... We'll have to rerun some numbers. I do know that... I just sent out something today with Tassels population.
How does Canada's population decline?
It did. I was trying to remember what that specific number was.
Just around 4,000. I think we're around 4,200 now.
So the planning commission will go through and, at least last, you know, to my recollection, they go through and they will be the ones that change this, correct? You know, Susan wants the past chair, so want to pick her or I do. Okay. And I'm literally not going to go through 188 pages. I'm not going to make them do that.
Have they met and discussed it before? We're out in front of them.
I think we're out in front of them.
From a grant's perspective, a lot of times, one of the first questions on the grant applications is, is this project in your comprehensive plan? Is that something you might want to consider too? If there's a specific target that you need that has grant funding available, you probably need to make sure that that project's in here.
So let's kind of spin off of that for just a second. We know that the projects that we have that have grant funds is our Clinch River Pavilion.
Right. Better than never, absolutely.
The North Tassel Remodelation.
At least the ones on the PowerPoint slide have.
Our Towne Tassel EMS. The building renovation. I think this is already in here, talking about the wastewater treatment plant. It's already in there. And I think the Route 460 water plant is already in there. Right?
I don't know if wastewater is out or not.
We will verify that. Warholt Park. So it's probably... Like, is it too late to add that? It has to be finished by the end of this year? Is it too late to put that in here? Is it kind of a...
If it's... Yeah, if it's done by the end of this year.
Right. Cool. I may have made this a little too big. There we go.
Yeah. I think the spending time on the goals and the objectives would be beneficial. So the projects you just mentioned are the ones on PowerPoint or what's going into the comprehensive plan?
Yes. May fund. Is it this one? Can I put some of this? Oh, um, mountain biking. Add it.
Can we just pull up the list that we have? Because we already have all this on PowerPoint? Can we just look at that and see? And I think that's what we decided last time to go with.
Okay, so Route 460 wastewater treatment plant. The police department relocation has already happened. EMS. Congressional direct spending from Center of War. So we listed that.
Do we know anything about that money?
The last time that I spoke with anyone was Robert Hilt from Rural Development. They were wanting to eat over those funds. And he said that he was the only person between here and...
That were several different regions that he was covering, getting money covered.
There could be a lot of people that had... They were no longer here.
Yeah, so you see, that's my fear is with all the cuts that's recently happened, does that money get...
No, I mean, I haven't heard anything that we're in risk of losing it. So it's just, I think there's been a little bit of overwhelming. Kind of.
Aren't there enough left?
Okay. About EMS. Okay.
So is that what we're waiting for on that project? Is then we release the cash?
I know that we have done the preliminary architectural report that they wanted us to do. And we sent that to them. Honestly, I'm not sure. I don't know what the holdup is there, other than that he's very much...
I know we were getting additional quotes and all that. And I just, I didn't know if we're... How far along it had moved.
So the community facility that's going to be the medical office, we did contribute $250,000 to that project. I mean, it's not technically a town project, but do we need to put it in there?
No, it's going to be done by February of next year.
Okay.
I mean, I don't think they're opening until like May. I mean, that still means I'm optimistic.
I hate to think that's where the funding is going to end up. I thought it would be here.
Are they going after additional grant funds? If they are, we might want to have an comprehensive plan. Add it?
So all we did was give a donation. It's not our project.
It is not our project, no.
So I don't know if it would fit. I mean...
The only thing I could see is if they needed letters of support, if they needed a resolution, something from you all, so they could go after some more grant funding. I mean, I could see possibly that, but...
Thanks. When talking to Chris, he said basically they're going to monitor, you know, primary care is focused on this one, monitor it for five. Because I was asking a specialist and thinking about Hayes, used to be a pharmaceutical place. It was like, hey, that'd be a great place for specialists. So what they, he had stated was they're going to watch and track numbers over the first five years and then see what the needs are in the community and then need more specialists. So I don't think that you're... I think once they do those projects, it's not like they're instantly jumping into cardiologist center. Well, the only reason I asked the question was the town has no control over the... We made a donation, so are we out of it now? I mean, do you put things in the comprehensive plan so they can ask for grant money? Or do they just come to the town and ask us to sign a resolution or submit a grant? I wonder if that...
I think we would be fine if they did come back to approach, even if it wasn't the comprehensive plan, we would be fine to do that.
That's what I was getting at, is it doesn't need to be in there? Which one makes sense? Have it in there or not have it in there?
Since it's not a town project, probably not, but if...
And I don't...
Okay.
They just, I'm just thinking, if it was our project, of course, we would have it in the comprehensive plan. But if it's not, do we need it there?
So Aqua Park and Flables, that's nothing that needs to go in the comprehensive plan. That's just something that's on our radar and we budgeted for that. Warholt Park, so we just talked about that. That is going to be completed by the end of this year.
I don't know if park maintenance upgrades might not be a piece of comprehensive plan though. Right?
Or what?
Warholt. No, we're talking about Aqua Park and pool and all that, like that's to make sure our facilities are...
I'd say where you're going with it, yeah.
Are up to standard and traction.
If you plan on doing primitive camping, that might be something to consider.
Right. We got a whole component of Lake Shaw Park. Yeah, just facilities and site improvement, I guess. You can have a blanket.
I did see a red line in the comprehensive plan, so I wasn't sure what all that.
Fire department sign, that's nothing that needs to go in the comprehensive plan.
And since we have that, any word from the company on the coming to...
I know when we did the order, they were like 12 weeks out. Is that right? Four weeks out.
So we're pretty good into it now.
It should be pretty close. Wall and Alley demo, no. But Farmers Market, but excuse me, Clinch River Pavilion, yes. That needs to be in there. Mountain biking, yes, that needs to be in there.
Now, would that be a separate addition or would that fall under parks and recreation? I would think that would be separate because that's not going in an established park. It's in property outside of town. You know, it's going to be standalone, you know, like... So is there, in the comprehensive plan, is it like a tourism? One? Sounds like it's...
It's that.
So put it under tourism?
I'd say tourism and we probably need some verbiage on how we're going to start focusing more on tourism and projects to bring in more people through that. My tour, the corner easement's next.
From this part. All right, mountain biking will put under tourism. And you said elaborate on, try to create our tourism efforts?
Right, yeah, some are a good shot. Focus, we don't have to call it tourism, seems to be the... We're in town, right? Tourism seems to be the way that we're trying to make our money now.
Okay.
So it's something in the comprehensive plan that's there.
Sidewalk maintenance and ADA compliance, I don't think that's anything we need to put in the comprehensive plan. However, we are going to be looking at that and doing some in the fiscal year.
So on our, like, public facilities, so we got ENS and water line and sewer treatment facility. After we do this upgrade, this is just spitball, but after we do this upgrade, is there an avenue to unload that onto the county so that we're not responsible for it anymore? So like for the water, for example, right? We don't staff and unmanage the water treatment facility. The sewer water treatment facility, we're in for half on that. Right? That's how, is it 60/40 split? And the 60's in whose quarter?
At hours.
So we got 60% of it. And services, the town... I would be... Why do we have sewer, but we don't have water? The responsibility for the water.
So there was an agreement long before my time. We actually did use to own the water plant.
Right.
And we sold that to PSA. Why don't we own that now? I don't know. I mean, that was again done before my time here. So, but to answer your question on as far as could we kind of offload some responsibility? So the water is produced from the water treatment plant that's up on Ford Street, which is located in town. The lines that come out of that, that is the town's distribution system. And that is what we're responsible for.
So when I was on council before that came up and they added that despite and Jerry would not mirror the same agreement that we had with water. Because I would have mirrored it and I wouldn't pay that TRU bill that we have to pay every January or February. I may come out even because they used our system, but he wouldn't do it.
Well, on ours, like if there was ever a time to unload it so we don't have to be responsible for the staffing, you know, thinking about the savings that we could have. Your payroll down there is probably, I mean, it's got, well, for each employee plus the benefits, probably 250 a year. Maybe more. And maybe the numbers don't matter specifically. But if there was a time to unload it and have future cost savings for the town, here's a shiny new facility, basically we're paying that cost upfront, we're getting upgraded. In addition, and it's not our responsibility to staff anymore.
Where you take the water?
I'm talking about the sewer, to mirror like we have it water. But here's brand new facility, okay, renovated, new facility, county take it on, push off hard blows. And that way you don't have to staff, have that at expense.
We wouldn't have to have that yearly lease fee discussion.
Right, and we're, we've talked about like increasing our fees and then all the riffraff that that's going to cause.
But what incentive does the county have to take that home?
I'm not saying that they have an incentive, I'm saying can we... Is there any way to maneuver or a way to do that?
I guess...
It's an agreement, right?
Yeah, I, my guess is the county wouldn't do that unless they raised our fees. Or, you know, they would charge town residents a fee, extra fee for that.
Because they're going to be there, right?
They got to pay for the staffing too. Somebody's got to pay for the staffing. It's going to be the town residents no matter what, right?
Yeah, that's a pretty big one.
$19 million.
And yeah, that's always something to be started with after the facilities.
There's probably a 10, maybe 30-year projection on it that you would have to run to see what your cost savings could be compared to us continuing to staff it. I don't know what that looks like, but I figured trying to plan, if we're doing comprehensive planning and looking at the next major purchase that we're going to have to do, it's probably sewer lines, water lines. I guess we're about facility now unless the fire department needs a major upgrade. But that's all I'm asking. Is there an angle here? If the water treatment facility is working and that's a better deal, would now be the time to include it. But if we're not, if that's not it, are there future renovation projects that we need to include in the comprehensive plan so that we're planning appropriately? One of the things we talked about was putting like a dollar surcharge, all the stuff to use to, invest in LGIP, save up the money, plan for the projects. That way we're not chasing or telling with rate increases each time. But if we're looking at comprehensive planning, what's the, in the next five years, what's the next major project that we have to do for infrastructure? And the reason for that is because we're talking about sidewalks. Yeah, I mean, like greenways, maybe that's it, bike lanes? Maybe it's something like that?
So I did think of something else that we need to add in here. It's not glamorous, but I don't know that we have choice. The public's covered from the EPA. So last year, you watched and received like at your residence, a lead service line inventory. It says, what kind of lines do you have at your house? So we have made everything comply with what we have to do. However, by November 2027, we have to have a plan in place to replace anything that is lead or galvanized lines.
On the downside, not the private owner side?
Yes.
All the way through the house?
Yes.
Wouldn't that not go along with it?
Not according to Virginia Department of Health, Office of Drinking Water, which got their margin orders from the EPA.
Is the Virginia municipal league like fighting this?
I mean, it's nationwide. It's not just...
Why the air policy?
Yeah.
It never has been before.
Can we sue?
I have, I have literally asked, why is that going to be the town's responsibility? We have never...
Can we put this in a water, in a clause that with the new house is going in now, they should be checked. From there, they should be grandfathered in, because they can't.
So I know if you do like new construction or if you have to have your lines replaced now, like there's certain building codes that you have to meet. You can't use like what you want to use like back in the 80s, you can't use some of that secondary. So some of that has been already taken care of for us. But the reason it needs to be added to our plan is there's going to be money out there for us to replace. That's what Rex Beckler with Virginia Department of Health is telling me.
To work to.
Absolutely.
So if you take it to the house and they change no...
Nothing inside.
Inside, it's usually, you're stealing through open line.
I completely agree. And that is what I wrote to them, saying, you know, the air policy is we do not come on private property. And I said, well, the EPA says that you're going to.
Well, so are they going to refund or provide the funding for us?
There will be funding that we need to seek. So that's why we need to add this.
So the need for this is different than giving us money to reimburse?
Well, I mean, we'll have to apply for funds and once we create these replacement plans.
What's the completion estimate? Like, do they, so they got to have a plan by 2027, renovation by 2042?
37.
37.
So replacement plan 2027 and project complete 2037. So 10 years?
So 10 years to replace every household?
Yes. Yes.
And it's nationwide?
It's called Flint, Michigan. Yes. But, um, when Jessica and I and the others went to Rural Water Association back in April, this was one of the classes that we took.
So it was, I'm assuming it's every house built before a certain year? Do we know?
Uh, well, not necessarily because they couldn't replace their lines.
Right.
So.
But as a general rule, we could, to, to give a worst case scenario, we could say every house built before.
I mean, I.
We have, we have.
We already did that information.
They did a survey.
We just had to send out nine hundred and twenty eight. Letters to our folks in town that have galvanized lines.
Which doesn't mean I didn't get it.
How do you know they have to get them off?
Because air, either they self-reported or air crew went and physically put eyes on it.
What happens if that, what happens if they didn't respond to the?
We had to get checked.
Oh, okay.
So nine hundred's a lot less than my budget.
Nine hundred and twenty.
Still less than my budget. But if, if it has to be in the comprehensive plan to apply for the funding to be reimbursed, then.
I, I, I would strongly suggest.
Okay, absolutely. That'll fall, and that's one of those things. You definitely, definitely, it's a last minute to take on a big project like that.
So.
Twenty thirty five.
You said you don't know if you would put this, the sidewalks on the comprehensive plan, huh? I don't know, then it's not a bad idea, I mean, we're gonna have, you know, infrastructure upgrades such as compliance upgrades with sidewalks and stuff.
We have.
I'd love to work on sidewalks.
We have a lot of sidewalks that need attention.
Um, we could put it in there. I, I was just thinking from like, hey, we literally have money in the budget to address some of that. But now if we wanna expand it, because this was particularly Main Street.
That's right.
So if we wanna expand that and add, you know.
Orange drill.
Compliance and, and things like that, sure. So, yes?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, I would love to see that sidewalk from the orange drill to Lincolnshire like it was supposed to be.
Fairgrounds.
Yep, and Fairgrounds Road needs the sidewalks, but I don't know where you put it.
Yeah, it's the same, same thing with Steel's Lane, I mean, that's.
Oh, yeah?
People walk up and down that road all the time.
I ran Fairgrounds one time, I'd never do that again.
Yeah, I mean, if you're looking at sidewalks as town lines instead of just a few, just. And we still budget for it each year. I mean, certain sections that we wanna repair or add in.
So one, one of the things we talked about was selling the property at Brighton. Do we want to leave that alone for now?
I think we tabled it.
Okay. Um, installing sewer lines to residents that do not have access. So that was gonna be a future project for twenty seven, twenty eight. I mean, there, there are grants out there for improving our infrastructure. If you all want to add that, like I've literally got it budgeted in, but we can, we can go for funds too.
Yeah, I think so, there's gotta be some funding out there for, I won't say rural development, but not necessarily rural development.
Get rid of stuff that tanks and time in it.
Yeah. What is it, they, they have a thing to get rid of old gas tanks. I'm sure there's something for stuff that takes too.
Um, primitive camping, this can kind of go in with our Lincolnshire facility and site improvement, I'm good with that?
It either go under tourism or break, the break department line on the sorry, you know?
Okay.
Yeah, why don't do the night fishing?
Hold on.
I thought, I thought we were doing all. It, it's on there.
It is.
I thought, Dave, I thought we were opening up all summer Lake Cadiz Creek.
I did too on that this year.
Was it, was it a police call or?
Well.
We got this in five days with no notice. I have heard.
We kind of copy pasted what we did last year.
Right, but that's not what we discussed.
I do know that.
The night fishing is, is, is a pretty thing, pretty good thing to do when you got, if you turn around the park. You should be able to let them fish at nighttime, it won't get, take out the vehicles where, when they're parking stuff. But they're gonna park there in the back too.
I do know that she had a lot of concerns for safety.
Yeah, I'm not mistaken, that's where we left it, we were gonna check with the insurance.
That was, well, the insurance was on the.
I do remember I did for friend of camping and they said they didn't have any other locality that did it, they didn't have anything against it, but they didn't have a guy that did it.
Right. Well, I mean, I, I understand having concerns, but we gotta, we gotta, I mean, my words, Dave, we're. Public access to public land. And there's, you know, with any, any amount of freedom, you're gonna have risk involved with it.
My just biggest fear is all the aquaparks.
Cadiz Creek does not have aquapark.
So you get kids out there and we're already grumbling about spending twenty grand a year to upgrade or update.
If somebody wanted to knife it though, are you saying that it's only because there's an opportunity because they're out there? That they're like, yep, you know what, it's a good idea, I'm gonna knife this thing? Like if somebody wants to knife a, a, a aquapark blow up, are they gonna go out there and knife the aquapark blow up?
But typically knife if they can have access. Because their cameras don't work at night either.
So, so what do we do to mitigate the concerns? Is it increase cameras, is it trail cams, is it, is it utilizing the ATV to drive around once every so often?
You're gonna have to have somebody on staff to drive around the ATV?
Yeah, it's point of patrol.
Who's up there working two now? Two and one employee.
I'm hearing a lot of you can'ts, but I'm looking for help can'ts.
Okay. Uh, you could have someone go and patrol it, it's, you can't do that.
Well, I'm just saying, if there are concerns, are they reasonable and can we address them?
I think all of them can be addressed. Someone coming across the wall.
I want to see which time line.
We should contact the M A.
So we did that about the friend of the camp?
I did about friend of the camp.
May, maybe I confused the two.
Yeah, so we did about camping, not.
I make it confuse the two.
So we're not fishing, but if you're, if you're gonna allow friend of the camp and you're gonna have.
You're gonna have to fish out there, sure.
Yeah, so it does kind of.
Anything else?
And if we can dig night fishing one day, what's the difference in?
I'm gonna have like.
Seven days.
Like patrol or whatever.
Yeah, with frequency, it's, you know, you, you increase traffic out there, then there's more opportunities for.
No, I, I'm just talking about as far as insurance wise, if we can do it for one day, we can do it for seven. But as far as the equipment, yes, you're, you're opening your exposure to access to that.
Just, does the county patrol Cadiz Creek just randomly just go up in there?
Obviously. Another thing, that, that's the big thing, we gotta have presence up there. I mean, I'm assuming the police officers have access to the, uh, ATV up there? Not right now.
Just have to check licenses, you know, early in the season, then it's, it's no.
Or push the, push it off to the conservation officer.
I was the one saying, I think they're the ones that check the, the licenses.
Yeah, I know, but most fishermen help in that.
But you guys can't get to the backside of Cadiz Creek, right? Yeah, so there's a big area.
Yeah, there's, there's a massive swamp, you know, you can go off Recreation Drive. But then you go to the backside, you gotta go uphill to breaks. There's no access even from point A or point B, unless it's water.
I don't know, uh, full-time fishing would go into comprehensive planning, it's just something that's for teens and seniors and adults.
I'm sorry, I'm a little fishy.
All right, that, that, again, that's just, I think, how big this company is quite important.
So, do you, do you want us to just open it up? You can go fishing anytime, do we open it up on weekends? Like, do we do Friday and Saturday months? What's, what's your happy close?
So, all season? Well, I mean, you gotta follow, like, it's, there's, it's here to trout water, you can't.
You can't.
There's, like, Cadiz Creek went up June sixteen or something like that and then closes out. Probably, you know, probably late September, something like that. It's the only public access. All right, I'm sorry, that's, I don't want, I don't want.
I mean, is, is that the direction that, um, I need to pass to my staff?
And by all means, we wanna cooperate with their police chief and their concern. There are things that are needed, like, we need to discuss it.
Okay. Do you wanna discuss that on Miss Lanis to them?
Sure.
Miss Lanis, audition. Ready to move to the next one? We kind of already addressed this one. Uh, Lincolnshire facility and site improvement, so we're good to put that in the comprehensive plan, yes?
Do we want to just limit the Lincolnshire, we have other recreation like playgrounds and stuff, should that also be?
I think you line them up.
Yeah, everything in there is part of a.
So recreation facility.
I know we talked about the Budford Park playground and we also talked about Tower Street. Not Tower Street.
Sounds like that.
We said we got a seven good grant.
The inclusive playground, we did.
You know what three was?
Do you remember?
I, I know that a lot of the other grants were, we had, we had so many.
So it's a hundred grand, yeah?
Um, so soccer fields are running law, that would be covered up for recreation facilities?
Oh.
We need to get some real numbers for that.
I, I saw somebody had something. I want to talk about.
Seen my closet and tried to find anything in it. But, uh, I mean, just, we had things drawn, but it was, I knew somebody who knew somebody who did the drawings, so. For how realistic.
I, I'm pretty sure you could fit two in there, no problem. Might have.
What are we talking about?
Soccer fields are running.
Yeah, I think, we talked about last time that we would do, that I thought would be to do one full-size field and then do smaller fields. And keep it kind of more of a multi-use facility.
Add a pickleball court, yeah?
Well, we got pickleball at Warhol Park. And I think.
That's what I, one, one, we just got one down there, we can put two out there.
I mean, we gotta look at the property, or the size of the property for any of it.
Yes.
But my thought was if you have two, that could be two full-size soccer fields, you can always have one, if they're turf, you can have it painted where you can move the goals and have the little kids play or whatever. Right, so, that, that's how they were designed in Princeville County, it was, you know. It wasn't multi-use type field, but it's mainly for soccer.
Right, no, and I, I thought we, we talked about that, but we, another idea that we had, because we have, we have the second. We don't have it, the county has the hospital football field, it has a second field, so we could.
Do one and.
Have a tournament in town if we needed to.
Just two different.
But then we would have like designated spaces for youth soccer and the different age groups. I mean, just depending on if the, we didn't have the size, if we got the size for two, can soccer fields, I mean, great. Especially if you could, you know, you can always make fields smaller.
Well, have, having one would alleviate that street that goes right through.
And I think that's what we talked about was the problem last time, is that street would hit center of people most.
We'd have to.
Right, I don't know, I don't know what all the going. Hell, I mean, I don't know, but you could put two soccer fields side by side. Real ridiculous. Fair enough, that's it.
I knew where you were going. I love real dick.
Um, these were projects that we said are not feasible right now, so I'm not really connected to go back over those. So that's what we have to add.
So it sounds like we're aiming at tourism, recreation and.
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure.
That's about right.
I mean, for responsibilities, I think it's very logical, what we can do. Recreation, tourism and infrastructure. What about, yeah, Mr. Patterson came and talked to us about housing developments? Something we've been talking about.
I just don't think his numbers are accurate.
But what about as far as, is there, is there an avenue for us to have land to coordinate or to be able to have reasonably priced housing? Is that something that you incorporate into your five-year plan?
So you have air springs and you have like tennis square apartments and those are considered lovely, you know? They're nowhere near a hundred dollars a month, I don't know. It's gonna be hard to measure.
Is there a partnership with like E S E or is that something that you wanna see in your?
It would be great to have, it'd be great to, you know, have something for older folks. But, you know, place for us to enter the accident, you know, they do housing.
Yeah.
And, you know, they have up what they pack and their portions, but, you know, it's a tough list to get on. And, and most applicants for their housing are, you know, younger mothers. They do have some older folks, but not, you know, not many.
Yeah, on, on the housing line, another thing I was thinking about with like in license in Virginia. Near where I live, it was kind of like that hybrid, not necessarily assisted living, but kind of like, you know, you have. There are organizations, there are corporations that build housing for quasi-assisted living, you know, those elderly folks that are near. Not quite need be in, in a, in a home, but, um, and maybe that's something that we can court in our area. If we look at like our region.
Well, see, I think you should talk to Chris Werman because the plan was, when they built the YMCA, there was gonna be housing in the back where they put the solar panels. It was gonna be like a non-stop shop and you had the wife.
Yeah.
At the hospital, you had the housing and then you had Harry Talk, all right there together. I'm not sure where they went with it. Because that foundation still sat on quite a bit of money that they could do, that they could assist with some type of power.
Yeah.
Some of them might have a project too, but they're, they're running, they just need property. If, if they can get the property, like the town and properties that are, you do all the sculpting and building the houses. You got money from the town and they're running sewer water and all that. And they, they do all the fields and, uh, limes and all that.
So, and the county, like, maybe there's, maybe there's an angle here with the land that's beside the elementary school. And we know, like, we're looking to plan systematically for like our populace, which is older, lower income. I, I think there's something there, but I don't know enough about it to cast that.
I, I just, you know.
I know fishing and aquaparks.
Yeah. I just, I, uh, I think his numbers are way out. To me, a piece of property that is attainable is when you go out toward county farm. Right, we ran a sewer out there for six. There's a big lot where you make the hard left. That property can be bought, the whole section. And it lays good, you have a great view, town water, town sewer.
Close to the rescue squad?
Close to the rescue squad, close to the hospitals.
George Lincoln's?
I told you not to tell.
Oh, I didn't hear that, he does not?
I could tell him.
I tried to buy that for.
Well, yeah, I mean, yeah, I wouldn't make you proud because I cannot be a bad. Um, but, you know, it'd be a great spot for something like that.
And the county just has all that C and X property too.
Yeah.
Feed right into that type of situation as well. But personally, I, I, that's too big of a problem. We don't, where I think government has a place in that, local government would be land, and we don't have it in town to do it.
Yeah, we, we're not in the housing business, but we need it, yeah. And what we'd like to see coming from the state. And what we'd like to see is, we'll tell you, yeah, but.
I'd love to help facilitate.
Right.
People that have the means to.
But we need, I just think we need more accurate numbers. When, when you say it's two-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand dollars for a, I mean, that's not real. You know, right now to build a house, you're looking at two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a square foot. Is that what it's up to now? Yeah, I remember where this was up. So sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight dollars?
It's been a while.
Okay.
But yeah, this would be what we would like to see, but. House of office. I've got a question. What about the property borders, the county said residences? Would that maybe be possible? I see. As in town, the property is, but where there's no right way onto the property, you have to go to El Periodician Road. You go outside of town limits for a mile and a half. And our sheriff could tell you more about, you know, El Periodician, y'all know El Periodician Road. Yes, I'm thinking four-sixty right at exit one, you know, we have the Back of the Dragon off exit one. The Nuffus Hall, exit one. And to make sure it was exit one. I like Craig Orchard exit as well, although it's not numbered. It's more or less outside of town in the yard. And then once you pass that sign where they impede.
I don't even think that sign's the network.
That sign's not in town.
Yeah, that sign's not in town, right?
Cause right, when you go, when you take that exit, it's two-point-two miles. I'd like to look at the map to see if that's under the town or not.
It's just outside.
Except for, you know, you have someone that's listening. I, I don't know if it's a comprehensive plan. That's the point, cause there's so many. But I just sent an email to Scotty and come on my post, if you have any more information on the initiatives that are working. And if it doesn't work for us, it could work for the county owned and mixed properties like the one besides the elementary school. Their numbers were a lot different than. Was that the last one we had?
That was it.
Are we done here? Last minute.
I, I don't know if this is a comprehensive, sorry. I don't know if it's a comprehensive plan, but in, what we do in the comprehensive plan is, is helping to like, uh, sorry, economic development, like, we don't have anything in there for economic development, but all these infrastructure and tourism upgrades help economic development. But if we're looking for grants for things, do we need something specifically spelled out?
That, that might be a planning commission. I mean, I, I don't mind, but.
I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there.
Good.
If we're comprehensive plan, it's where we need reference to get grants. I think definitely anything industry-wise, we want to be able to facilitate if we can.
Let me do a little digging of this stuff.
Yeah. But I don't wanna just throw words on the, like, shit.
Sure.
And I do think we're, we are taking steps towards that with infrastructure upgrades and tourism.
I would like to see in this comprehensive plan, when you read through, sure, a lot of it's just like, that's how these things are built. But I was making a joke about like our national security strategy being like eight pages in our town's comprehensive plan. It's a hundred and eighty-eight pages. It's like, are there actually, is it, is it just word fluff? Or are we actually setting a roadmap that we can actually execute within five years to actually achieve specific measurable tasks? And, um, and maybe you need some of that fluff language in there, but I would, I would like, personally, I'd like to see it stripped and have concrete roadmap. And, and I think within that, you do have to account for other councils taking place and they're gonna have other, other visions. But I do think a lot of the heartburn that we experienced over the last eighteen months, it's like, all right, what are we aiming at? What's the budget? Are we serious? Are we really serious? You know, like, we're, now we're like, year and a half later, it's like, where's our, where's our tangible progress? If you do have, like, these objectives, I just, here's one, just for example, like promote innovative partnerships between area centers, just learning and training in the business community. What's that actually mean? You know what I mean? You know, like.
I think green spaces, having places here around town that when all the kids are riding their bikes, they're like, oh, over here, we can shoot basketball. And there's some bee house over there, gate it off.
Yeah.
And if it's, where they learn some science, or my next door neighbor was a biology teacher and a ball cop, talks in mathematics. I would rather learn like them next door, my horse next door sitting when I got off the school bus, right? Well, so I got into that sort of thing at a young age and I feel like we would always do science experiments. And we have, you know, this one there, what I'm getting at is the green spaces around town was my original vision with cultivation culture LLC. Was to find property that's for phones, that's, that look, that's, you know, an eyesore and turn it into, at least create a job to demolish it. Reuse some of that wood, renovate, restorations, right? And from there, we have the plot clear, we can hire someone that's bills well, right? If we all of our brains together, we can use the most logical contractor for the type of job that we're, or infrastructure that we're going to be creating. Little water park maybe, uh, or aquarium type deal with the little McDonald's right there in the corner where it's grown up. Just have some sort of fountain. The fountain oxygen, add oxygen to the water, gets rid of algae, you know, kind of cleans the water, plus helps with fish. I like to see some fountains, fountains, you know, around. I like to have one on our farm. That's one of the first things I like to bother, what do you call it, aesthetics? So I guess I wanna get you guys, make it more aesthetically pleasing. If we can also keep the heritage brought in, something that, hey, this spot here was used back in World War II. And then also now is currently used to learn about plantation culture or propagation station. Like, you stop by here, get your plums and stuff out here. So that was my original vision, one of the, the surrounding is, let's start with just thinking of the, your eyesores. And see if we can get them out of decent products and then bootstrapping.
Do you all have money to do all this?
No, sir, I don't, not yet at the moment. Right now I'm focusing on bootstrapping and crowd, I haven't done any crowdfunding. I've created a rupture out there, I'm not quick to charity. You know, so it's just gonna be right now, just what I'm making is we're just funding the feed for the animals.
We gotta move on if there's no other.
And the great part is.
Let me, uh, let me kill this first, so, uh, we gotta conclude the, the work session, the comprehensive plan review, and I'll maintain a motion to go into executive session.
Motion to go into executive session.
Second?
Second.
I'll favor going to executive session, if there's a question, I. I'll post it if I say in there.
Executive seat.
Motion to go into executive session.
Second. Let it just be here, happy you're here.
Guys, second's coming up, executive session.
Eric, you're trying to.
We'll say we're coming to executive session, if there's a question, I. All right. I'll post it if I say in there. So we need to certify the executive session.
I apologize.
Certification of executive session, whereas the Tappo Town Council convenes an executive session on debate pursuant to an affirmative reported vote and in accordance with the provision for the Virginia Freedom and Confederation Act. And whereas two dot one seven three four four dot one dot code of Virginia requires certification by the council where such executive session was conducted in conformity with Virginia laws. Now therefore being resolved, the Tappo Town Council hereby certifies that the best of the knowledge. One, our public business matters are awfully exempted from the open meeting requirements by the city law were discussed in the executive session to which the certification resolution applies. And two, only such business, or public business matters that were identified in a motion convened the executive session were heard, discussed or considered by the Tappo Town Council. So I need a roll call vote to certify. Councilmember Beasley.
Aye.
Councilmember Klein.
Aye.
Councilmember Fox. Councilmember Hankins.
Aye.
Councilmember Willis.
Aye.
All right, so we're now out of executive session, nothing discussed, so we need to talk here, so we'll move on to our public hearing. Sewer bonds for wastewater treatment plan upgrade. Leanne, do you have that in a print and out form? Where's it in the packet?
It's in the packet under.
Got it. Notice the public hearing on Tuesday, the eighth day of July twenty-twenty-five, the Council of the Town and Castle of Virginia will conduct a public hearing on the proposed issuance of one or more series of general obligation water and sewer bonds of the Town and Castle and be estimated maximum principal amount of fifteen million five-hundred thousand dollars. The purpose of the proposed, proposed bonds, together with available, other available funds are, A, to finance a wastewater treatment plant rehabilitation, together with related expenses, and B, to pay costs associated with issuing such bonds. In addition to the pledge of the town's full faith and credit to the repayment of the bonds to Town and Castle's net revenues from its water and sewer system. The public hearing, which may be continued or adjourned, will be conducted at seven fifteen P M. In the Town and Council chambers, Tappo Municipal Building, two-one-one Central Avenue, Tappo, Virginia, two-four-six-five-one. Interested persons may appear at such time and place and present their views. My goodness, Mayor, Town and Castle, anyone here to discuss water and sewer bonds? One month going plus, and we will adjourn the public hearing and, uh, get started on the regular Town Council meeting at seven-thirty. Welcome, everyone. We're gonna, uh, start the regular Town Council meeting and it's gonna span for the flag, allegiance and dedication.
Flag, allegiance. To the light of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Nate, we can leave it for the table.
Sure thing. Heavenly Father, Lord, thanks so much that we can gather, that we can exercise our freedom to assemble, that we can do it peacefully and openly, that we can have, uh, the meeting as defined by the code, the code of the town, that we can participate as citizens. We thank you for that privilege. We ask you to cause the spirit of peace over the meeting tonight, that discussion would come and go, we could all end and head back to our homes, knowing that business was done the right way. In Jesus' name, amen.
All right, so, uh, first on the agenda is our special presentation request. We have Heather Davis from Tappo High School marching band.
Hello. Um, I'm the band manager, Chris Smith. I don't think I know about everybody up here and everybody in this room. But our kids, we're gonna have about eighty kids again this year in the marching band, middle and high school students. And they will start assembling next Monday, getting everything together. They'll go to band camp at Enry and Henry the following week. So I'm just here to ask the council and the town for a donation to help us out. Um, we get very little funding from Tappo County Health and Schools. That usually buys like our drumsticks for the drum line and usually our reeds and stuff like that for the instruments that need those. And that's about as far as the pot of money that they give us go. So we do fundraising, we ask for donations to go in our jungle fund to help us with different things that we need. So I am asking the Town Council this year for a donation to help us pay for our show, which is gonna be the music of Queen, to help, that's to put the little dent in the cost for our music for the season.
What fundraising opportunities do you have?
Well, we're gonna be doing a spaghetti fundraiser. Um, we always, um, of course, we do concession stands with football and cheer, each home game. We do those for middle and high school. Um, we're gonna do a bingo at the lead with Tappo today. Um, I know Emily and our, our group are working on that. So that's pretty much what we have on our radar at this point. We usually do a golf tournament every year at Tappo, but this year our date was given away. So that was, we didn't get to do that this year. So that's put a big dent in our funding that we have available for our season.
Do they, uh, just on the band, are they bringing no schoolers up to be in the band this year?
We have some seventh graders and eighth graders that will be in the band, yes.
Does it have other available dates for all the golf tournaments? Any time possible to do?
There are, but they were in the fall, right in smack dab, middle of football season and competition season. And, you know, it's just, it's a very grueling time for, you know, Brent, you were a band parent.
I mean, nothing about what you're talking about.
For a band parent, uh, Mayor Hoops has even been to band camp one time, Mr. Shatron. So he knows everything that goes into that.
You said it's eighty, eighty students.
Yes.
I'd make a motion to donate five hundred dollars.
I'm second.
I've got a motion in a second. Uh, any discussion? All right, I'll move. With, with the beginning of new fiscal year, did we look at our guidelines, did those change? Does that fit the guidelines up yet?
It does fit the guidelines. Uh, fifty to one-fifty can go, but based on our guidelines, uh, upwards of seven hundred dollars. And I think five hundred is a good number to, you know, gives, gives them the ability to do some things and keeps us responsible there.
We ran our parade to M O L A. Town parade inside.
And last year we missed out on the donation because when it came forward, there wasn't enough people to vote. And then after that, um, I think band camp and everything had already happened. So we did not get a donation last year.
All right, so you are going to the county also, so.
Yes, I am. I have that letter in my car ready to mail to be put on their agenda for the August meeting.
Any more discussion? So I've got a motion in a second, I'll favor giving a five-hundred-dollar donation to Tappo High School marching bands, if there's a question, I.
Aye.
I'll post it if I say in there.
Thank you all very much.
All right, so moving right along, next on our agenda, uh, local business recognition, the Wayfair, Anna Robertson, Deborah Wilson. Come on up, tell everybody what it's all about.
My granddaughter's coming to.
That's pretty fine, I say.
Yeah, I like it.
I like it.
It's drawing a lot of attention. I, I particularly have been on the watch for that sign to go up and it was, it was a process. Uh, if you watch it, it's about three weeks, it ended up and I wanted to have like a watch party or something, get it up and finally get it lit up, left town for one day and came back and it was lit. So, but it's, it's been a fun process watching the sign go up.
And we had our, um, our soft private party and I think that went really low and three songwriters from Nashville. Um, I thought that was low received and that's kind of what a show is gonna be like when we do events back there. There'll be ticketed events, um, and actually we're working on one that's kind of exciting, Tanya Tucker's daughter's coming, Leila Tucker. Um, I don't have the day details yet, but that's one of the ones I'm working on. And, um, we have a band coming up on the sixteenth, uh, Royal and Tripp Band, they'll be playing in Nashville. So we're starting to get, starting to rotate that out. We're gonna do a competitive open mic night on Thursday nights and we're working on our jam session. And then on Sundays, we're working on our bluegrass. Um, so everybody at church or whatever can come do bluegrass and have lunch. But I think everything's ramped up really well. We came in within budget, which is exciting. Um, so we're, we're feeling pretty proud. We're just trying to get stacked up, which is hard. And that's why we haven't, you know, announced any kind of a grand opening, cause we're kind of allowing the staff to breathe and learn. And, you know, we're having a little rough time getting breakfast, staff. But once we get that, it'll be a good floor on for breakfast. I think we're gonna, we're talking about only being closed on Tuesday. I think we're gonna, we're talking about only being closed on Tuesdays, because all the other restaurants are closed on Mondays, so it's a kind of compliment, giving the town something to do on Mondays.
So I have to, the music's super exciting, but food's what? What kind of menu? Any?
What kind of menu? So we're definitely doing very healthy, we're cooking with beef chow, and we're working Appalachian heritage for our beef and possibly some chicken. And we're getting a lettuce out of West Virginia, I don't remember the name of the farm, but it's, it's from a regenerative farm, and it's actually more nutritious than microgreens. So while we're trying to do Appalachian food, like, and, and we're including the super burger, we're trying to make it healthy options along with it, so. And this week, we're actually adding to our menu, because you know, we're doing slow roll, and we only had four items on our entree. We're adding steaks this coming week, and we're adding a few more sides, and let the kitchen work on that and perfect those, and we'll keep adding. And by the time the grand opening day, we'll have the full menu ready to go.
Well, we have, we do appreciate you.
Mayor, can I say one thing?
Please. Sure.
I wanna thank you guys, because y'all sent us invitation to all police officers. I'm not gonna say publicly what your offer was, but we greatly appreciate that.
Oh, absolutely.
Also, I want to emphasize, we have a business on the other end of town now, and we need to really probably revisit.
Then to that park. Absolutely. I knew that would come up.
Yeah, I'm a little stressed about parking in the lawn down below across the street when we have an event, because older folks can't, there's new staffs, there's nothing for them to.
And we've, we've discussed that also, to how to fix that, or remedy that.
But that full, that parking lot, it's gonna be full one day, very soon.
We're looking forward to it.
Very soon.
I hope it's for the Royal Trip Band.
The reception, the music, Rex Stanley just did us right.
Did anybody get to come to that, the Rock Stanley?
I was at the Rock Stanley show.
Did you like it?
Oh, yeah, it was great.
Yeah, it was good.
Wanted to go to that, I was so excited.
I'm working, I'm still working on that front room, it's not quite ready, but it'll go clear.
Well, we have some gifts.
Thank you.
And we have a new picture. It wants to come up here, so we can get counseling to it. There we go.
Yeah, I would also like to say, Chris wouldn't be here, but it's his daughter's birthday, and he had to go to Austin, so, thank you guys.
Thank you guys.
We look forward to seeing you at the Wayfair.
Thank you all.
Alright, so moving right along, we have the approval of minutes for the special called council meeting on June third, twenty twenty five, and the council meeting on June tenth, twenty twenty five. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So minutes.
Okay, got a motion and a second, any discussion? On favor of approving the minutes from the special called council meeting on June third, twenty twenty five, and the council meeting on June tenth, twenty twenty five, states of Texas and I. All votes states of Texas and they. Alright, minutes are approved. So next is the approval of the financial statements and financial reports for June twenty twenty five. Retain a motion to approve. Second. Have a second, any discussion? On favor of approval of the financial statements and financial reports for June twenty twenty five, states of Texas and I. All votes states of Texas and they. Alright, financial statement approved. Next is the committee slash conference updates, finance commission committee updates.
So we had our meeting last night. We've been going over since June, the subdivision platting ordinance, chapter twenty four. We streamlined this, section A has got seven bullets for subdivision plat, then section B, simple plaits, like if you and your neighbors divide the property different or something. Of course, this starts on one, one hundred here, council plate. This is just an update to bring everything in line with the state. Brad, is he in there?
Yeah, we've discussed this a couple of different times at different previous council meetings, and I'll only give an apology for again, getting this added to planning commission two months ago, and then Chris and I were back there with the final time really to make sure we had everything really in order to help and make his and Leanne's job a little bit easier. We went through and made a few additional work visions, that's why you're giving it this month as opposed to last month, but I think that was, what you got there is in good shape to put it into a public hearing for next month, and then take effect, I guess, in October, once we get through all the process.
Any questions? So your house that riverside is out there, you're gonna demolish? I think it's twelve ninety one. So where do you have it?
That has nothing to do with what you're talking about. Absolutely nothing. That should be.
Do you have any questions? He didn't say question what? And being that he is a person.
I'm gonna give you a new nameplate for next month.
I need my father. Where are we at with that question?
It's already turned over to Brandon Clark, and he's gonna tear it down when he gets back. And Henry too, his house on Highland, it's coming down off, one of the burnt, still on the side.
So where do you have the house in Paintersburg that burned?
That's in the next one on my agenda. I got one on Hills, Hills Street, I think you're on there.
Chris?
What are the other questions?
You were still out of order.
Next is unfinished Christmas, the land use tactics open, the turnip pipe.
Yes, you guys, last month, when we looked into the potential for the town to adopt and or determine what the county has relative to land use, and profits in effect, I spent some time earlier today, actually, with the commissioner revenues office, see what the county actually done in the past, I copied their ordinance. After looking at that and looking at that I received from NDA, I would like to have some more time to discuss this with the manager, talk with individual council members about a few things, rather go through and actually have a draft for you this month. So it is something I've looked at, and with the Jordans, I wanted to give you a little more research before, and talk with you individually about before going forward with it completely, to get you a draft, like, that's workable to you all.
So are you saying that, like, their model, we need to modify their, their language?
It's not so much the language, it's, it's actually from talking, after talking with the folks at the, at the commissioner's office, the propriety of, of doing it for the town. I just wanna make sure that you have all your information.
Okay, because the last, the only thing that we discussed last, last round was an estimate that the commissioner revenue gave us, which.
Right. And I think that's a fair assumption, that's probably what it would involve.
Right. Okay, so are you saying that that, that estimate is not, not accurate?
No, it's, that's very accurate, I think it's very accurate.
Okay.
The other numbers, though, from the commissioner revenue's office, was regard to the town's tax revenue as a whole, because of the way that certain properties have been purchased or removed from taxable rolls, have reduced your tax revenues, based on real estate taxes here within the town. I wasn't sure, okay, I bring it out now, I wasn't sure if you were aware of that, in terms of your comparison to your numbers for twenty three, twenty four, and what they're gonna be for twenty five and twenty six. And that's this one money you're taking away from your, your budget. I realize the county doesn't, but the county's dealing with roughly forty thousand, so this is, and your deal is roughly forty four hundred.
Okay, and do you have a ballpark estimate for what you think the difference, what's the delta on it?
It's gonna be roughly seven thousand dollars.
Okay.
And there definitely, I'm not, I'm not saying the numbers aren't different, I'm just wasn't sure from the conversations last month, in terms of, is that something that you truly want to do? And I'll do whatever you all want me to, I just wanted to make sure that that was, based on the information I have from the off, the commissioner's office today, as your overall numbers, and how they declined, and over the last two years. Because we, we just went through a period where the rates all increased, but your tax revenue, again, I'm getting the information from the commissioner's saying, the revenues for the town, for real estate taxes, are decreasing, not increasing.
No, but, hey, I don't, I don't know how that's accurate, based on the reassessments that just occurred, and houses went up like thirty percent. Again, just going by the numbers that they gave, they give you specific numbers in terms of overall balance.
I think, with that being said, I would like to hear more from you before we make the employees.
That's just information I received today.
Sure.
I agree with him.
I'll get, I'll get, yeah, that's just what I was told.
I mean, I'm bored, but I mean, I wanna, I wanna see the total picture, I mean, I wanna know what they're saying, but I don't know how they're coming up with, with their version.
Again, that was information's not straight from, from Dave, but from one of his trusty associates.
Right.
That surprised me, again, it's just what the information I got when I was looking to look into, and then I didn't hear that last time, so. Gave me a little pause to say, well, I wanna come back and tell you all, that's real, and what I was asked to research, and what I found.
Was, was there, specifically, because you've got three different types of land use.
It's fairly straightforward, it's under Virginia Code fifty eight, one thirty three twenty nine, I believe, is the actual code section allows for, for the purposes of adopting the ordinance?
I guess, a real question for me is, Leanne, were you aware of this when we got this?
No, and that's why I'm, I'm just sitting here trying to think, what are we coming off of this?
Thirty two twenty nine.
This book, from the commissioner revenue, that would make us lose money, because we literally just had the reassessment last year.
And how much did it go up?
A lot.
Well, just.
And it may have been from the perspective that they were giving me, was that in terms of the number of parcels that are being taxed, and that the, that total number is decreasing because of, as an example, the police station, which is a fairly significant taxable parcel that was removed from the rolls, and that may be what they're referring to, in terms of that, and maybe a couple of others that I'm not aware of.
Leanne, your answer in the budget comes from the commissioner revenue, right?
It is. I mean, I think the assessments that they give, and I multiply it by our tax rate, and then kind of account for, you know, no payers, late payers, that type of thing.
Right.
So I'm, I'm not sure where it's coming from.
Was it, was it specifically, I was asking, is it a particular category, is like, been land that's been recategorized to agriculture or open space? Forget about the third timber.
Those are three of the examples I would give, with the properties that were taken out of the tax roll altogether that were purchased by the town, such as BB and T.
Okay, but we've only purchased.
That one.
Yeah. Okay, I'm happy to look at more.
Seven thousand dollars, I'm still probably leaning towards it. I'll follow up, I will, I just want, that conversation today gave me a little bit of pause, because the number didn't sound that big last time.
Right.
But then when, in the context they put it to me, that they, that they couldn't understand why the town would want to consider it, I said, okay, I need to find out some more information.
You're talking about me out of built out there, it's getting me in trouble now.
But it just, it, I was surprised at the.
Tell us that we represent individuals, and we're not looking at this as raising revenue for our own purposes.
No. Because you're looking at roughly about, from the numbers, it's roughly twenty individuals that are affected by roughly twenty seven or twenty eight parcels on each tops that are affected by, that are, are receiving land use treatment from the county, that are not receiving from the town. I think there are actually these. Twenty one taxpayers that are affected by, and there's roughly about twenty eight or twenty nine actual parcels.
And then there's, there's requirements in them, in there, and basically, if you change your use, if you go from agriculture to residential.
Residential, you've got to report. You've got a rollback, you've got a five year rollback, if you did, that's the state code that's.
Right.
So that prevents any gotchas and money on the table.
Right. Alright, I would be curious if you're looking at this, about the percentage, and what percent, those three uses, I would think that ninety percent of it's agriculture, but I'd be interested in seeing the uses.
Yeah, there's only three, it's four, open space and agriculture, so.
Right, but out of, out of those twenty, twenty one properties, how many of those are of what, each use? The intent for looking at something like this was to, I mean, as far as Tassle being a, we're looking at economic incentives and, and trying to be pro-business, if you're running agriculture in town, you have that special use, if we get adopted, it's not too prospering for us, and that means us more in that direction, and that's, that's the intent, I think Mr. Willis was trying to do that.
If I'm just, a quick glance, I would say most of these are either open space or agriculture. There may be some in here that are, that are timber, forest, but most definitely direct to open space. But I'll, I'll go back and get them to clarify what they told me. Again, I was just, I was the messenger, not the message, so it doesn't matter what I was given, the surprise that I got, so I said, okay, so I said, well, I need to look at this a little further, and bring that back to you all, see what you want me to do. I'll check a little more, and it may very well be, if I can get a satisfactory answer to everyone, I can then, to the point where it's okay, you do wanna go ahead with that information, I can go ahead and get started and have a draft and an ordinance to you. But it's, it's not just a simple, it's basically, it's about seven or eight different sections and subsections with it, so, but it's one thing, I hope that I can just refer from the county, massage the lines, trick the lines a little bit, just to make it work, and have it to where you can have something to look at for next month.
Okay.
I'll find out first, and I'll get back to Leanne, and then you can communicate that to everybody, if that makes sense.
Any questions, Jeff?
Any other questions?
Alright, so we're gonna move on to the new business, the first reading sewer bonds for wastewater treatment plan upgrade. Unfortunately, it doesn't say a turnip pipe. Ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation water and sewer bonds of the town of Tassle, Virginia, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed fifteen million five hundred thousand dollars. Be it ordained by the council of the town of Tassle, Virginia, one, it is determined to be necessary and expedient for the town of Tassle, Virginia, to finance a wastewater treatment plant rehabilitation, rehabilitation, together with related expenses, collectively the project, B, to bar money for such purpose, and C, to issue the town's general obligation water and sewer bonds therefore. Two, pursuant to provisions of the Public Finance Act of nineteen ninety one, in view regard to the provisions contained in the town charter, there are authorized to be issued general obligation water and sewer bonds of the town in an aggregate, aggregate principal amount not to exceed fifteen million five hundred thousand dollars to provide funds, together with other available funds to finance the project and to pay the costs associated with issuing such bonds. The bond shall bear such date or dates, matures such time or time to not exceeding forty years from their date or dates, bear interest at such rate or rates, be in such denominations adored, be executed in such manner, be sold at such time or times, in such manner, as the council of the town may hereafter provide by appropriate resolution or resolutions. The bond shall be general obligations of the town for the payment of principal and premium, if any, and interest on which it's full faith and credit shall be ever. Ever, what did I say?
Irrevocably.
There we go, pledged. In addition to the revenues of the town. In addition to the revenues of the town's water and sewer systems, shall be placed for such payment. The town clerk, in collaboration with the town attorney, is authorized and directed to see the immediate filing of a certified copy of this ordinance in the circus court of Tasswell County, Virginia.
Do not read them.
So do we need set a date for second reading?
Yes, next council meeting, for the August meeting.
I think, Commissioner, set the, uh, second reading for August.
Twelfth.
Twelfth, uh, do we need a motion for this?
It's. If you want it, it's, it's that you had your first reading.
We have it over here.
Second reading, take away.
Okay, so it's gonna be set for next council meeting.
For you, Jerry. Yeah, I'll be agenda for the second thing, the second reading.
That word's coming up.
The word you want to.
That word's good for the.
If you want, if you want to wait until the reading's second by the next month, you can do that.
It's up to you guys.
Or we'll just put Brad's name in the parentheses.
Wow.
All right, so moving right along, law changes effective July first.
You wanna read this one to me?
Sure.
See if it's got some. Uh, folks, this is the standard ordinance adoption that you have to do every year after July one, changes from the General Assembly that affect any part of our, from our code section sixteen dash two, come out of either forty-six point two or eighteen point two, that our officers then need to have applied as to our local codes, and you do this in order to make them in line for any changes that happen in Richmond. So, here we go. Adoption provisions of Virginia State Code, be ordained by the Council of Town of Tasswell, Virginia, section sixteen dash two, adoption of state law Article one, Chapter sixteen, of Motor Vehicles and Traffic Orders, in Town of Tasswell, be in effect, everybody has amended as follows. Section two sixteen dash two, adoption of state law pursuant to the authority of forty, section forty-six point two dash thirteen thirteen of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty, as amended, all of the provisions and requirements of the law to commonwealth Virginia contained in the Code of Virginia Title forty-six point two, section forty-six point two dash one hundred, and the Code of Virginia Title eighteen point two, Chapter seven, Article two, eighteen point two dash two sixty-six, and my follows from there, as amended, except those provisions contained in this chapter and except those provisions and requirements, the violations of which constitute felony, and except those provisions and requirements which by their very nature can have no application to within the town, are hereby adopted and incorporated in this chapter and made applicable within the town of Tasswell. References to highways of the state containing such provisions and requirements adopted shall be deemed referred to streets, highways, and other public places in the town, such provisions and requirements are hereby adopted in Tasswell, Tasswell, and made a part of this chapter as fully as those set forth at length herein, and shall be unlawful for any person in the town of Tasswell to violate or fail, and lack the refuse to comply with any provision of the Code of Virginia Title forty-six point two, or Code of Virginia Title eighteen point two, Chapter seven, Article two, which are adopted by this section. The Council of the Town of Tasswell is hereby adopted, and imposes the same penalties for the violation of any provision or requirement hereby adopted as imposed for a similar offense under the Code of Virginia Title forty-six point two, or in Code of Virginia Title eighteen point two, Chapter seven, Article two, as amended, subject to any limitation of the charge of the town of Tasswell. Need a vote to pass, and a vote to pass is an emergency ordinance to take effect immediately.
Motion to pass, it's a three.
All right, so we've got second and discussions. All in favor of, uh, the resolution or the order that, the order that others might have just read, spaced out by Sanai? I'll oppose spaced out by Sanai.
And motion to approve it as an emergency ordinance, so that it will be effective immediately.
Correct. So I have a motion. Second.
Second.
Any discussion? So all in favor of passing this as an emergency and taking effect immediately, spaced out by Sanai? All opposed spaced out by Sanai? All right, so changes are now in effect. Next, the mowing bids update, Land to Rent.
So at the last council meeting, we discussed mowing in town, and it was brought up that maybe we should bid out sections of our town, because air crew is just not able to keep up with what we really think should be the time distance between, like, when you mow an area, then by the time you get back to it, the grass is already sown out. So what we did was we, um, had a request for quotes, the Town of Tasswell mowing and weeding services. The Town of Tasswell is accepting quotes on the following. Bid one, and I did that in separate jobs. Bid one, mowing and weeding services on Riverside Drive, from White Smuggler to Bulldog Self-Storage Corner of Professional Drive. This was a distance of three point five miles. Bid two, mowing and weeding service on Fair Brown Road from White Smuggler to H&R Block, corner of Main Street, distance of one point six miles. Bid three, mowing and weeding service on Fifth Castle Turnpike from Pop Shop to the ramp on the four lane of, sorry, Route four sixty, a distance of one mile. So we had bid openings last week, and as you can see, this file is full. We had twelve different bids, and what I've done is, we did a bid tab sheet for all of them. Um, the recommended bids would be bid number one, which was Riverside Drive, um, the distance of three point five miles. K and L, um, came in at one thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars per mow. Bid number two was Fair Brown Road, a distance of one point six miles. That would be Johnny Dillon with Pete Ilon Lawn Care of five hundred and fifty dollars per mow. Bid number three, Fifth Castle Turnpike from Pop Shop to the Route four sixty is Williams Tree Service. Sorry. Uh, Williams Tree Service, yes, at five hundred and fifty dollars. So if these bids were carried out, and they were to do them twice a month, that would be eight mowings between now and October the twentieth, the total cost for all would be thirteen thousand six hundred and twenty dollars, oh, sorry, thirteen thousand six hundred and twelve dollars. So if you all would like, we will issue bid awards to these bidders, if you would like that.
So the, I think, what the intention of the, of that was, was to be able to do that if we got behind and do it, you know, as needed. Is that?
I don't think you can get further behind than where we are. These places haven't been tough, none in North Tasswell by the Red Bull for that not to be done for decades. You don't realize how many people fished up against, young people, old people, retired people, and I mean, these places look like a jungle. And then, sometimes the weeds aren't cut when they do it. It's a difference between cutting and, and just.
Not whack it over.
You know, if these people, if this is what they do, I'm gonna have the weeds cut, and then you can go to it. And that cost, you're saying, you're saying thousands of dollars. One employee would cost you to thirteen thousand.
And by bidding allowed to three different companies, and that's how the bids fell. It would give us an opportunity to see if we needed to look it to a different direction for future, you know, it would give us kind of a.
Yeah, I mean, and I like the fact of getting it to three different people, and you can gauge their work.
Right.
And if we were to have to do this again next year, you know, maybe if we wasn't behind, then we wouldn't get all the texts about how bad it went, and that's a heck of a thing.
Yeah, that, that's fine, I just, when I discussed it last month, that, that was my intention, is if we get, because we were talking about hiring people to try to keep it up, and we were gonna get it if we got behind. I understand we are behind, but getting caught up, but if, if that's the intent, if that's what everybody thinks is the right decision.
Budget's fine with it?
I think that this could be fine in our budget.
And this will allow us to focus.
On side streets, on the park, on the dam, on the lake.
So how many employees do you feel like the town is down in the public works?
Public works, very dark there.
Public work. Hmm? You have employees down. So public works, they did not fall under grasp of.
I think we're three full-time employees down.
So if you can't hire three full-time employees, you can't hire a part-time, a part-time, to me, it's a problem.
I, I agree, I think it's a good solution, and the guys will do have to focus on some of the other areas, especially that park, we can't let it get away the less. Based on those bids, and just an idea on the budget, this is probably, is there any, are there any more areas that you would consider? I noticed a lot of Tasswell Avenue out there.
Tasswell Avenue is awful. I, I mean, I, I don't wanna be critical, 'cause I know this stuff, but, you know, like, like Tasswell Avenue and somewhere, we have got to spray. Like, at North Tasswell, between the road and sidewalk, it's like little, you know, it's, it's, you have to cut that, and you need to go right behind it and spray, because you're, you're weeding places that shouldn't be weeded, it should be gravel there, you know, and I wrote up Main Street today, and the grass and the sidewalk, I almost took my weed eater out and started, but I had to cut it.
And, and not to throw just any more work in there, but trees that are coming over the sidewalk, when, when you run through there, I know at one time, you know, we used to, the yard crews used to go through it, and of course, uh, of course, you get a horse through.
Well, Tasswell Avenue's pretty bad, you're always coughing again, and you have tree wood.
You need full time job.
We'll cut through it.
Do we wanna limit it at this for the rest of the summer, see where that lands?
I think you'd see a good test case, and maybe, yeah, it would work out really well. Bid on next year and.
Just, just out of curiosity, did you kind of compare this based on mileage to the square area of Winnie's yard park to Walker Pan last year, and like, and just, just 'cause sometimes you get curious about this stuff.
I did not do.
I think if you don't wanna do that, tell me, I'm gonna tell you, now y'all got robbed. Y'all got robbed building the shop park. Because it's steady work, when we write a check, that check is good, and these vendors have to realize that. You know, they're gonna get paid every time, and I think these vendors did, I mean, those are very quiet.
So would you like me to award bids?
Yes.
Okay. Did letters, are award letters gonna be allowed?
Now, when, when you have to.
Next week.
Do we need a motion for that?
I don't think so. I mean, one down, you both cut, was it?
It was.
It was.
If you would like to, ask.
I'm just, I'm just changed, but.
If you want to.
If you like it. But. Motion to approve the bids.
I'll second.
All right, got second, any discussion? All right, all in favor of approving the mowing bids, spaced out by Sanai? I'll oppose spaced out by Sanai. All right. So next, Virginia Enterprise Zone discussion. Can you read?
So this year is a year that the Virginia Enterprise Zone is, is up to have amendments made. Um, so I have attended several meetings with Mandy Archer from Virginia Enterprise Zone, and the Tasswell County, and the other localities in the Tasswell County. So what we would need to do is, if we would like to make any amendments, we need to do so, and to get that information to the county, because they have to have two public hearings. And I did this presentation with the IEDA yesterday, and they had about three different recommendations for me to add, so I have made those recommendations, and, I'm sorry, I made those changes of recommendations that they've given me, and before I, before I go into this, all we're doing is, we need to add this space, and we can take away from this space. We're, we're not really changing a whole lot, um, we're not losing anything, but it, it will cover what is needed. And one of the reasons that we have chose these particular areas is because it's either a residential, um, space, or because it is a, owned by a nonprofit, which would not be able to qualify for Virginia Enterprise Zone incidentally. Okay?
Go ahead, Wes.
Yes.
So this Prime Street, have you seen it?
Yes.
Is it in the Enterprise Zone?
It is not, not this boundary, but if you would like to add it.
No, I was curious. 'Cause I was thinking one side was, and one side wasn't.
I'll verify.
So when, was there some gotcha about, you had to connect? When we were looking at this, I think it was with Tim Dangellson, was it? We were trying to grab a specific area, and there, and it may have been North Tasswell we were talking about, and I thought, well, how do you connect it? But was there something with the roadways that you had to connect?
I'll take some.
Okay, I was thinking the same thing, probably somebody had to be contiguous in some manner, but it's not, it's not like spot, I mean, or anything like that, it takes a, even though it says Enterprise Zone, you think of zone, and you wanna get away from having one piece here and another one, you know, quarter mile away, and then threw together, but it doesn't work that way with the E and C, it's based on acreage.
Unless I have been horribly mistaken who the maintenance I said in, and I don't think that I have, but, um, so this is a, just the map of the town right now, and where the Enterprise Zones are, um, you can see it's that light blue section, and what the recommendations from IEDA are, we would like to add, this is, um, the section of Riverside Drive, White Smuggler, Stop and Save, the Grundy National Bank Lot, and the newly cleared lot that is vacant across from, uh, White Smuggler and the Stop and Save. So two point eight acres is needed for this. Um, a member of the IEDA asked that we include Earl King's Building, that was the older of the Tasswell. Um, point oh, sorry, zero point eight acres is needed for this piece of property. Um, this is our section where we were gonna be doing the North Tasswell revitalization. Um, all of these businesses are included, I'm sorry, I said businesses, all of these properties are included, um, in our North Tasswell revitalization project. Um, so that's Lily's at the field, the warehouses, BMW, Farm Bureau, Trigger Repair, um, and the old Snappy's building, and four point one acres is needed for that. Out on Fifth Castle, um, there's a property owned by Kevin Crisp, and then Mint Motors and the little shopping mall section, um, where Lovey Bay Florist and Your Great Escape is. Four point seven acres is needed for that. This is on Main Street, um, the building that was the Board of Supervisors Building has recently been sold, to my understanding, and there are plans to, um, add some additional businesses into that building, and the lots for the Traveler is not in the Enterprise Zone currently, and the IEDA asked that the Cox Lot, which is the green space, be added, and then there's that one point six acres that will be needed for that as well. So just the Main Street is tied to Prime Street.
When you say Board of Supervisors, meaning is that the empty buildings beside.
Beside. Little Roscoe's.
That's what we used to, that's what we used to do, used to be covered, Jeff Ward's.
That, that's what I meant, so when they said Board of.
So is the back facing. Okay, so Pine Street is not currently in the Enterprise Zone? It's, it's showing that.
The left well has lots that front Pine Street, or are, some of them, you see it right there?
Main Street probably backs up to Pine Street.
Right, the, the Main Street side of Pine Street. The, the Main Street side of Pine Street, but not.
If it's got a Pine Street address, it's not going to be.
If it's the south side of Pine Street, yes. The north side of Pine Street.
Okay.
So, uh, the old Donny's Willie?
Yes.
That, that is included?
Yes.
Okay.
Because all those, those properties front Main Street. Properties, it's the properties that are on the south side of Pine Street, north side of Pine Street.
Well, that part of the problem.
So who came up with that? Well. I'm disrespectful and I can't get a grant because I'm not in the enterprise zone.
We can add it. If you all recommend that we add it, we can add it.
That's why you didn't want side of the street, not the other?
Because your place was a residence before? In my guess, when the council did this 10 years ago? And you had businesses that were on, on Main Street and none on Pine Street.
Well, 10 something years ago. I mean, there's no such as a Main Street or none, but.
The county's going to be pretty restrictive on giving, like, because there's a certain amount of acreage that you can have within the county. And what we did with the I E D A was bring out to them, it's like, look at these unused spaces and outside of Richlands. And Grant, how about you give some of that to us? And I, I think that they're, I think that they're still being stinging. I think that we could extend down to the end of, uh, Main Street. Basically, back of the drive, the businesses on the other side. Like, there's, there's business that's left, uh, that are left out of this that I think could be included, but it's going to require the county to give up some other areas.
And I, I do think that there is a locality that is going to be shifting some of their acreage. And that might be a possibility. However, I don't have that information if that is going to come fruition right now.
Right. So all you did was just shuffle, shuffle our assets, do an internal.
That's all I've done.
I, I mean, certainly, as we're building the comprehensive plan and we're trying to lean forward, we provide for, for businesses, uh, getting this extended. That would, that would basically open up to like, what, real estate improvement, uh, grant, Jock Grecian grant. And then we've got our own internal stock. So those grants are what individuals gain access to on the state side for the enterprise zone. But the other thing is, this, this can, according to Mandy Archer, this can be updated annually. As long as we update it by November, have good luck in the county to do that every year. But, you know, things change. As long as it's updated by November, it's retroactive for the whole county.
According to our existing ordinance, it says it has a, runs for a period of 10 years. That's why it came, it was basically done in 2016. That's why it's about to expire this time. But again, I wasn't part of the conversation with Ms. Archer.
Yeah.
That's just the language that, because we basically, when it was adopted, it was presented. If you want to get on the, on the order of the state, adopt this ordinance. And we basically then retold it to get the language of Tazewell and adopted it.
Okay.
Whole ball. And then the, the council itself then determined this, Danny's question. That's when the basic areas were designated for the E C act of applicability. Now, what Brian Horizon came to, I'm not sure, but that's how he came up with that.
Are, are we leaving anything on the table that, like, because we have been talking about the comprehensive plan in, like, four, looking five years in areas that we're likely to develop, grab more Tazewell, like, that's, that's fantastic. But are there areas, are there areas that were going to be done with this that we could make the ask to the county to give up a little bit more, give us? Like, advocate for Tazewell, right? Give more.
So if, if I'm able to get additional acreage on it, would you all like to see all of Main Street? Added to the enterprise zone if I'm able to get the acreage?
Yes.
I would, I would think it would make sense.
Okay.
But is there like a trade-off? Is there just?
There's two acreage within the county that can be allocated to Virginia.
And currently, we have so much.
And we, I mean, we compared to Richlands and Grant, we've got, so.
That's what I was trying to run.
Yeah, I think that they've got more acres than we do and we're going to short-stick on this.
So Leon, what, what type of vote were you looking for here? Especially if people ask questions and we might try to get more properties or more acres?
We need to get air amendments before the I D A for the county so they can present it all as a package deal. Like, all the towns are, are doing this. And I actually think, um, it was on the town of Richlands agenda to fore Tim and for them to set their Virginia Enterprise Zone as well, I think this evening.
Could we ask for more enforcement in a night fight where they got to come back and tell us about?
I, I don't think that's going to be an issue. I really don't. Because, like I said, there's locality that was going to give up some of theirs. I really don't think it's going to be a, a big fight. I don't. I just don't know, I don't know that number of how much they're giving up either.
So could we, in theory, make a motion to accept this and give allotted extra space?
Yes.
Extend down Main Street?
Yes.
Can we send that request up to down Main Street?
Yes.
Extend off the ex, existing enterprise zone towards the whatever direction?
Would you also like us to include Pine Street?
What are the restrictions? I mean.
Have you looked at this thing? Take a look at the actual criteria. That I don't get targeted specifically in and make sure, because you, I wouldn't want it to where you can put your property in there and you say, well, then I'm not going to qualify because I've got to have so many jobs I've got to create and so on, go on with it. So if you were like, and yours specifically, like for a residential real estate rehabilitation, right? You've got to create three full-time jobs. And, you know. I can say two.
Yard maintenance is a full-time job. And not the sun.
Paying in, I'm just.
I'm just saying.
But coming off of Main Street this way, you know, we're talking about down, down that way, but coming off this way. I, I think maybe they created some of the gas tank stuff there, but you do have an unused virtual space. There in the corner, could, could this out get that renovated if somebody wanted to? I don't know, put a taco shack there? Bring, bring back the, bring back the big burrito.
It's, is that gas station down here? It's already.
All right. Well, I make a motion to accept your proposal. And with the caveat, if we get extra, if we are allotted extra space to move, extend our existing or the, the newly accepted zone. What direction am I going here?
West.
West on Main Street.
Sunset.
You made the motion. We get a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I, I want to include that before we hand that to the county. I don't want to if then, I want to go ask, say, here's what we want.
I can do.
You're saying request the extra space?
The extra space.
I can, I can do that. I think we'll get that.
Okay.
What is your understanding, Leanne, and also say this to the council members, that this is going to be adopted and put into zone by the county?
Um, so I think they're willing to have a public hearing this October. Ladies and gentlemen, October.
The way your, your town ordinance reads, it runs through 16, 2026, sorry, 10 years. So it expires on, once they July, next year. And that's what I was wondering about the timing. If they're looking for, okay, here's what we want now to put into it before the next, if they renew it. Because then we would have to, as a council, would have to re-adopt or the ordinance again. And making, I guess, effective for another 10 years. And then the map didn't fit at that point in time. So I'm thinking that there's still time to go back and have some play, I would say. That's why I'm asking. Because I haven't had a specific conversation with Ms. Archer or with Tim other than the general, we say, okay, I know it's coming up. I know that our ordinance is still in effect for another year. But when does it really get? Now you've made your bed, you had a lay-in, there's no more lock cases.
I, I don't think it's that restricted. I know the ordinance says that, but I think cooperation between the A C D and the county, I think it can be amended more frequently than that. And what I was.
Well, I can say to that is that our ordinance needs to change and reflect. That's the only thing.
Every time it changes.
I'm just, there needs to be a language to utilize that flexibility because right now it doesn't. Because that's when you said that, I was like, ah, boy, where are that kind of language wasting the ordinance that was given to us 10 years ago?
Okay.
So we need to get that clarified before. Because if that's the case, then you've got all kinds of flexibility and time. But that's why I was curious.
Well, I'll amend my statement, my motion to say. My motion to propose the proposals that you have and also include Main Street West to, uh, fair grants. As far as we are permitted to have. How is that? As far, I guess, as far as applicable, applicable properties.
I'll remember that. I saw, I've got a second. Any more discussion? So all in favor of Leanne to submit as Councilmember Beasley had suggested, stay so by saying aye.
Aye.
Allo, post, stay so by saying aye. All right. So, uh, next on the agenda is nomination for Council Representative for Planning Commission vacancy. Ms. Emily, jump ship on us. So we've got an opening crush on the, uh, Planning Commission. I'm going to nominate Mr. Danny Carter Willis.
I'll say.
All right. So I've got a, uh, I've got a second. Any discussion? All in favor of adding, uh, Councilmember Willis as the Council Representative for the Planning Commission vacancy, stay so by saying aye.
Aye.
Allo, post, stay so by saying aye. All right, and you got it. So, uh, next on the agenda, the pool pass concerns. Councilmember Fox.
Yeah. I have an issue about the pool passes every year. And sometimes the, the pool is shut down for a week or two weeks. And, uh, and also if you have a, a kid that needs help at the pool, they should be able to have their parents go and stand by to watch them since the lifeguard is watching everybody else. But they said it's $50 for pool, for, be on the pad. Now, how can we change that a little bit? I mean, these kids need to get out there, their parents need to be with them, but you're charging the parents.
So I think what you're saying is the parent is not getting in the pool.
No, the parents will be watching them and maybe screaming at a lifeguard. But they, I mean, they definitely need to be able to be watched.
Okay. So I, I think the reason behind that is because even if there is a person that's not in the pool, the lifeguards are still having to watch that person. Because what if that person wants to fall in the pool? So that's.
That's why I got a parent watching, being with them.
But what if the parent also followed the pool? That, that lifeguard still has to watch that parent.
You know the parent is going to be watching your child.
Right.
His handicap, go in the pool. And, you know, if you can't get a lifeguard, jump in. It's what I did last time. So I'm just asking, and I think the people need, need to have some leeway there to have, uh, a handicap. And the pool, the parents got to be watching because you got a lot of people out there swimming.
All right. Is this like an individual day pass or is it like a season pass? If you buy, like, so for example, like, I think the, whether it's country club or like the old private pool back in the day, if your family bought a season pass, like, you can have a babysitter or a grandma be attached to that season pass?
I don't think.
Are you talking about a day pass?
For the, for the summer. And the kids, I pay for it, three kids. Now, what it is, if I had a handicap, it's kind of wild a little bit. And, uh, she goes to the 11-foot pool and she, she, she'll go in. And we should try to keep it down to three foot so she can use the jump up and down. But, uh, I don't think a parent should be charged that day. I've heard going out to the pool and, you know, with other kids.
So are the parents on the pass or not on the pass?
Uh, we're on the pass.
But you're not paying by the day?
The kids are on the pass. I'm on the pass.
Okay.
Now, if I get my wife, I put her on the pass. I mean, I mean, there's some people can't do it.
So you're saying some people go get a day pass, but they're having to pay for two passes even though one person's not swimming? And they're just there to be a supervisor?
Right.
And, and what Leanne's saying is like, well, they still got to watch that person because if they fall in the pool, our lifeguards are still responsible. And, you know, do what I used to do as a kid. It's like, I babysit and then end up swimming. It's, it's already. Yeah.
I mean, that just being on the day was.
I think, um, in, in my mind, we still, we are still responsible for that adult as, as far as insurance goes.
Anybody.
They're still using the facilities as far as the bathroom, the locker room, whatever. They are still taking up space in the facility as well. I understand the concern. But that ultimately those lifeguards are responsible. And, uh, a chaperone has just the same amount of ability to fall in the pool and drown as anyone walking around that pool.
And you're actually more likely to fall in because you're going to be over there helping. So you're going to be.
I saved a little girl.
I understand that.
That's what Todd, Todd, they said, a lifeguard got there. I was already in the pool getting pulled around.
Did you dive in or fall in?
What?
Did you dive in or fall in?
No, I jumped in.
Why, she said you fell in. So if you fell in, does not our lifeguard think you're in danger?
No, 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 no. I jumped in. I tried to get a lot of attention.
Well, you said you fell in.
Well, excuse me. I'm sorry. But like I'm saying, I think something should be done for these handicap kids going to the pool. And it, this way, that's why I'm saying it to, for the, for the handicaps, you know. I mean, this is ridiculous. Now, you've got a handicap and you've got to charge this person?
Well, if I'm hearing correctly, for your insurance purposes, you're inside that fence. If you're inside the fence, you're, you have to be wanting, you're part of the lifeguard's responsibility, Dave.
Lifeguard's responsibility to go in against the child?
Not to be, if you're inside, you've got limits for the number of people that can be in that pool. And the pool is contained or is inside the fence. So once that person comes in, that's part of your limitations. It's the lifeguard responsible for it.
And so.
If I'm hearing that correctly.
The only thing I'm saying, Brad, is the, the handicaps, you know, might go out to the pool and the parent knows exactly what to do. The lifeguards don't.
And not, they're still respons, but they're still responsible for that person, Dave. Regardless of their handicap limitations or not, here, that lifeguard's responsible.
And I understand the situation and the concern, but there's also, like Zach was saying, it's hard to police, like, yeah, I could go in there as a chaperone and then what if I say, I'm going to get in the pool and help my kid in the pool? Now you're taking up a space in the pool. What, where do you draw the line on who qualifies for a handicap pass and who doesn't? There's a whole lot of big things that you're going to put on the weight of a someone, part-time worker to make those determinations that, that's out of their wheelhouse to do. I, I get the concern and I, I, like, I think it's a, it's a valid concern and everything. I just don't know how, number one, you administratively do it. And number two, there are people that would take advantage. And not all those situations are the same.
I don't think that they would take advantage of just go out to. I don't think that they would take advantage of just go out to the pool and, uh, play. Only thing I'm saying, you've got a bunch of handicap people in this county and town. And I think if the guardian be with them, I don't see any harm in that. I don't think it's gonna be five hundred kids going out there at one time. I mean, you, you'll see probably one, two or three out there. That's it. I don't see, you know, bringing out an army. It's just one or two, three people. I don't think they're gonna take the whole kid when there's people already, there's room to move around out there.
I'm, I'm not saying that. I guess what I'm saying is we, we still have to be responsible for that chaperone. The chaperone is, every parent is responsible for their own kid, but the, the lifeguards are responsible for every life in that area.
Right. Now, what if the handicapped slip in there and then the lifeguards didn't respond with the, nothing?
What if the chaperone falls in the pool and the lifeguard's responsible? That, that's what I'm saying is, a life is a life in that, in that situation. Anybody can fall in and drown.
It's, I mean, they're not gonna be on the edge of the pool watching them. They'd be back to see them. You could see them. You could see them in the pool.
I, I think we're making some generalizations that are big movements in this situation.
I think if the handicaps, if the handicaps out, that he's, uh, like to go out and play on. But this handicap, my, the handicap, I'm talking about, she'll, she'll walk up to somebody else. She'll walk up to, uh, uh, Stan, or, well, Stan's job is uniform. She'll walk up, brand hug, oh, yeah.
So, like.
I mean, that's just what I'm saying. For handicaps, and I'd like to see somebody not be charged to stand against the fence, just to watch. I mean, if, if, if they're going to go under because the sight is here, then she starts screaming, lifeguard. I mean, it's just something against the fence. Like, stand against the fence. They don't, they want to stay in the shade. They stay in the shade out there. But this is wrong. This is deadly wrong. Town tasks will just see this, not to have a, uh, a, a, a form to sign to say, okay, you, you do it, but you gotta do it. You know, if it happens, the town's not responsible. But.
But our insurance wouldn't let us get away with that because if they're inside that damn fence, the town is responsible.
I talk about handicaps.
Stuck on, I mean.
And I don't care. I, there's a way, it's in the insurance company to see this, but I'm fighting for the handicaps in this town.
You can't.
And you're saying, hell no, but he can't go. Well, okay. I mean, there's a fence.
I want to say that.
Well, you can hear, it's silly like that.
I think we have equipment to help handicapped people get in the pool.
I like the way, uh.
We were saying, I was gonna ask about that one.
So there, there is a lift for, like, wheelchair access.
Right.
The lift right now is not working. However, there is a new one I already ordered. That way we can replace it. We, we've worked on it the past two summers. And this year I said, you know, if we're gonna keep fixing it, keep fixing it, just get a new one. It's less than four thousand dollars.
Right.
So we've got a new one on order. As soon as it comes in, it will be put in.
Is that included the cost of that installation?
So in other words, yeah. I'm trying to do two facts. I think the insurance company can say, okay, we can, we'll work with this, or talk to the insurance company. I think we can work with this with handicaps. I mean.
So do you take your responsibility away from the lifeguards? So if you're chaperoning somehow and they fall in, are you saying?
They, if, if they fall in, it's either gonna be, uh, me, I did it last time. I jumped in, I'm on water, and one of the guards is, oh, we're looking at something else. And I tried to hover at it before I jumped in. So that's another thing that I can't understand. They should have a lifeguard right there where the, uh, splash pad is. They can go to the left or they can go straight. Over on the very end would be good, but I mean, they can do that too, but you need somebody where a lot of kids are involved. Now, these kids are running around on the, on the pad and jumping in the water. You know, I just think that I would love to see the handicaps, they can go out there and jump in the water and play around and be watched.
Can I ask a question?
You're not supposed to.
Oh, no, I'm not. But, um, at what age could a child be by themselves at the pool? I believe it's fourteen. Okay. So if I live with my thirteen-year-old daughter and I'm not planning on getting in the pool, I'm still expected to pass admission? Yes. Okay.
I kinda look at it like, there's, there's kind of ways, Dave, that you could look at it. You could look at it like if you're taking your family to a museum, everybody's paying to go see that attraction or a movie. The pool in this case is just the attraction. But I don't, I don't think you're totally wrong. I mean, I think there's natural parks where there's maybe disabled veteran discounts or whatever. I mean, those, those policies can be created, but you have to create a policy that can be enforced without putting too much undue stress on the staff that's already part-time. So if you, if you implement that, I, I would recommend putting on the season pass. And that way it's documented, it's there, it's one and done. You know, these folks are coming, you've got the list added. But on, on the day, day-to-day use, you're, you're gonna have that thing. It's likely that it would be abused. And, and very hard for part-time teenagers to enforce. So you're, I don't disagree with your sentiment at all, but the policy creation that like enables that to match what you're asking for, I think is, is a challenge and would be something that's like the, in the record, recreation director's, uh, lame to, uh, present.
Dave, did you come up with a proposal and we'll talk about it next meeting? Can you do that?
Well, I don't, yeah, I guess, but I'm fighting for these kids.
Well, I understand that. Come up with a proposal and we'll look at it. Thank you.
And thanks for giving the lift.
Yeah. Okay, moving right along. Set public hearing for planning ordinance amendment for Tuesday, August twelve, twenty twenty-five, at seven fifteen P M. I obtain a motion.
So move.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor of setting the public hearing for planning ordinance amendment for Tuesday, August twelve, twenty twenty-five, at seven fifteen P M. Stay so by say no.
Aye.
Or no, stay so by say no. Okay, so next is use of Commonwealth Attorney's Office for police department cases, Chief of Police Link, Mr. Stanley.
This is a, uh, a very hard subject to talk about. Uh, Brad and myself goes back thirty-two years. My story of nineteen ninety-three, um, me and Brad became friends and we've been friends all along, um.
Until now.
Until now. And I'm taking beans away from the table. It's nothing personal against this whatsoever. It has come down to finance, time management, um, the court system in itself of having two different courts with two different attorneys. You'll have the Commonwealth on a felony side. You'll have the town attorney, which does a excellent job. And I'm not just saying that, I'm telling you that factually.
That's Michael, by the way, is.
It is Michael. It's not Brad. But anyway, it's, Michael does a fantastic job. He reaches out to our officers. He prepares for his cases. But what we run into is, is we're having to call two attorneys and we have a felony case with a misdemeanor case. We have to go to two different courts. We have to go to felony court. We have to go to misdemeanor court. When we get to misdemeanor court, and Brad and I have talked about this, it's nothing with, with Michael. It's got a lot to do with the police officer. It has a lot to do with the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, and it has something to do with the town attorney of not communicating. So when we get to those misdemeanor cases, the judge doesn't see the full picture of the case. So our cases will be dismissed because those misdemeanors were petted before the court if you don't know what the true root of the problem was. So, um, we, we have a court that's, that's pretty lenient. Uh, we know our bounds. We know where, where we can go, where we can't go with this court. And, um, sometimes those things get thrown out and it, it's starting to become a major problem. Town manager, myself, and Brad has talked. They up the court, uh, attorney fees. They've almost doubled. That's a burden back to the town and the citizens pay that. It's not quite double, but it's almost double. So we've even discussed of looking, are we really going to let this continue to do town charges? Or are we gonna turn it back over and let state pick up all costs? We're not even coming out even, uh, when we go to court with our fines and what our court cost is. Nothing to do with the attorney filing that has our court system. I think it's time that we really visit that, um, for time management, for cost, and the possibility of us having to really turn all, over all of our adopted by town charges to the Commonwealth. I think Brad told me they've been doing it for sixty years. Or his firm.
Our firm's been doing it since nineteen sixty-six.
Nineteen sixty-six. And, and that's, that's a long time to represent, and I think Brad's firm, um, shows he's, I mean, they're here and they're in rich lands. I mean, I, I think that goes to show you what kind of, uh, firm that, that Listby Hart and Potts got. I'm asking the council for approval to move forward and of going with Commonwealth for many reasons. And it has absolutely nothing to do with the law firm that represents us. It's just double cost for this town and we have to go two times for court. We have to pay our overtime. And then when we get to the general district court, we pay that overtime, we, we pay for our attorney fees. And if whoever we've got charged doesn't have money, we pay for their attorney.
Yes, they're not convicted. If they're convicted, then they, they.
They do. But what we run into is the court that we set up under is very lenient. And sometimes we don't get a conviction on a misdemeanor. I'm not talking bad about that court. We, we respect that court with all means within us. That's the reason we have courts the land of our law, our laws of our land and our courts that we have. It's, it's tough business.
So you wanna go to, uh, Commonwealth Attorney's Office?
We're, we are requesting to, to do that for, for many aspects and nothing to do with, with our representation.
What's the estimated savings?
Um, as of May of last year, I don't know up till June, I maybe it was June or May, I, I can't remember. We would have saved fifty-three hundred dollars by going with the Commonwealth, um, versus having a private entity to represent us.
You're saying from May of last year to June of this year?
It would have been from, from July one to May of, July one of twenty twenty-four to May of twenty twenty-five.
Gotcha. What's, I, I don't know the total amount that we're spending on this annual.
Are you talking about for, if we went with the Commonwealth?
No, just what we've done over the last two years.
I can't give you a two-year. I can give you the, from July first of, uh, May of this year. And it, it runs about the same.
Okay.
It would have been.
Our office can give you, when we submit our bills to the towns every month, it's broken down by, uh, that was, that's been going on for twenty-seven years.
This would have absolutely nothing to do with the civil side of what.
Well, no, no, the only reason why I'm saying so, every one of ours, for everything that I do and Michael do, you'll see our initials by our original charges. So you can go back through and look at the bill for March of this year and you will see nine percent of it's B B B, all the civil stuff. And then the other side is criminals and the M T for Michael Thomas. And occasionally you'll see W H for Will Hunter. But you could go back in to find those numbers, you could probably find it fairly quickly. To go through, you have to go back through some capitalizing, obviously, to go back and see, to pull those out. And we could do it in quick books. You just have to go back in, pull the bills and just say, okay, here are the two, here are the two charges. But that's what you can, to give you, to give you an exact number, just to say, to give you exact.
Okay. Well, well, basically, I mean, the other reason I was asking, just because one of the things that we tried to do last year was implement and get our procurement policies and, you know, standard operating procedures in the code so that we get, no one needs to follow procurement, who needs to bid on it? Who has the opportunity to bid on it? That was one of the root causes. And, and I don't, I don't know where this, without knowing the cost of it, I don't know where this lies.
This is not a procurement issue. We've gone through this before with other councils. It's come up in terms of, for the term, and it's not a procurement.
Okay.
Fourteen thousand, twenty-eight dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Over the last two years or late last year?
This is what was in your budget, uh, sorry, what was in your packet, like, tonight, as of June thirty, for your fiscal year twenty-four, about it.
So if we go to Commonwealth Attorney's Office.
You say five grand?
Yeah.
So what about, you know?
Michael motion to do this. Hell, that is, leaves a, he's pressure on the, uh, officers that has to go to the court, plus the night shift officers.
I would think that's, just to get procedurally, what you probably just make a motion of a second and then you have some discussion, yeah.
I'll make a motion to, to pass to the Commonwealth Attorney's Office for the police officers. What's the issue, Brad?
Hold on, Carl, you made a motion, so we can either get a second or get squashed.
I'm not making a second, just to have some discussion on.
Yeah.
Now, I wanna chew on it.
I mean, to let it die and we can chew on it.
Alright. Looks to me that it's, unless you're about to make a motion, I don't.
I would like to know the year it's set.
Alright, so.
She give, she give, uh, what was it?
Fourteen thousand.
Commonwealth attorneys go and charges, uh, seven hundred dollars a month to represent us on law or.
That's eighty-four, eighty-four hundred dollars.
So that's eighty-four hundred.
That's roughly six grand.
So I. So fifty-six hundred dollars a year.
The issue's there. Somebody make, I just wanna, I think it needs to be discussed.
I'll make a second. I'll second the motion.
Discuss, discuss.
So is it more, is it more for streamlining than, than cost savings?
It's more of the streamlining and being in the court together on all the cases, not making the officers go to the court two times. And for the court to see the entire picture that we're not getting relayed to the court. And it's nobody's fault. It's just when it's, when it's separated like that, and you got an officer out here, it's two o'clock in the morning, and he's trying to try to call two attorneys to give him the story that he's needing to get. The other night we had twenty-seven calls in the night shift. I actually come out of work, uh, from about eleven-thirty to, to three o'clock in the morning just to help out night shifts because they had twenty-seven backlog. Two of them had to rest.
It's not gonna be, okay, because I don't have experience with this. It's felony charge and misdemeanor charge. It goes felony prelims. The misdemeanor has to go separate.
Because we have a separate attorney because of, you have a Commonwealth that has a court date, and you have, you have our town attorney that has a separate court date.
So even though there, it's one offense or multiple offenses, one hit, then you have.
The court applies. Now, every, every case, let me also emphasize, every case that we have is not always associated with a felony. I want y'all to know that. I mean, that's not always the case. But when it does, it.
Under your code and under the appointment, whoever you choose, when you've got your council, basically appoints the town attorney. And the town attorney under your charter handles misdemeanor. And the town attorney under your charter handles misdemeanors for all charges recovered. And that's the way it's set up. That's the way it's set up to every other municipality, state as far as I know. And then in our county, it's the same way, Richlands, they're charging, not identical, but it's fairly similar. So it's kind of weekly. And historically, it was one where that you had attorneys, when I first started practicing back in the nineties, each town had their own town attorney. You had Steve Barry, you had Jim Carvey, you had Lewis McNeese and you had Harris Hart, or in most cases, Bob Lawton. And that's the way it worked at, 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 now here recently though, in the last, I guess, how many years?
Three, four.
Three, four years, that has changed for whatever, due to reasons that again, it's gambling, I don't know about that. In terms of Richlands, Cedar Wolf, I think still.
Cedar Wolf still does.
Still does, there's Brad. Brad Bradwell still does. Town of Bluefield was Matt until it was always Steve and Steve retired. And then Matt came in and Matt left and then they brought in the attorney they had after Matt. Because when Matt was switched, it was. Because then they had, their town attorney was felt from over and with them. So it was a matter of, probably a matter of both economics distance and practical application to it when they had their attorney. They didn't have an office in Bluefield. May have contributed to that. And with regard to Richland, it's been going on for a while. We have done that for a while, but I think even before we even started. We were prosecuting, our office came in and started. Richland's had gone through several attorneys, had a lot of turnover. Four or five attorneys in a matter of seven, eight years going from when, because Matt was doing it, Lewis McNeese. They fired Lewis and brought in Brad Bradwell and they had issues with Brad and they fired Brad. And then they started brought in Shannon Cook's office and then tried, and said, but that's the kind of backdrop you've had with what's been going on logistically between the individual towns. And all the while, the misdemeanor felony things kept marching, that's always been the same. It's been done that way since I've been practicing law. You've got misdemeanors and felonies. Yes, they took somebody, you're charged with a burglary and then assault and battery or whatever the what. And then you end up with a felony misdemeanor and yes, you end up having where the town officer, excuse me, town attorney can only be there at the prelim day, depending on whether or not then they certify, but the misdemeanor with it and send them up together. A lot of times they'll end up all crossing one and then take it up and certify them both and recharge it again at circuit level. There's a lot of different machinations to the way it works. And I mean, I get Stan's position and his officer's position, I do. Where our office is not jumping up and down saying, why are you firing a Stan? It's not like that. No, it's never come to that. It's been a matter of what they feel like would be a better fit for their office. And I get it.
You're thinking personally.
I am, I am economically and I'm not speaking bad. I'm talking about the officers. I mean, we have to pay the officers every time they go to court.
And we can't, our office can't.
No, it's not, it's not our town attorney's fault. It's just the way that the court system works. And you have a Commonwealth attorney that has a court date and you have Michael that has a court date. And we have to, we have to go with those court dates. The court sets those dates and we don't have special dates.
So let me, let me make sure we're on the same page here. This is for felonies only or is this, we want to do it for, but our appointment that we made in January specifically says that the, doesn't, the appointment didn't, but the code says that the town attorney has to handle the misdemeanors?
That's correct. That's why you're having this discussion now because the way your charter reads is that you all appoint the attorney. And so it's got to be, that's when I brought this to the office and the manager's intention is that in order to make sure that you don't have some defense attorney come up and saying, hey, if they're, we're not just going to make this decision to do it, you need to follow at least the protocol from your charter. The tenant to council is appointing this attorney, in this case, the Commonwealth attorney, to handle your misdemeanors.
So we are within our bounds to do this at this house. Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to make sure we could.
I don't see, the code, your charter doesn't specifically say, and I'm going to get into Dillon's rule and whether or not you had the power from General Assembly to split it this way. But it basically, if you read through it real quick, under the appointments. The town attorney. To represent the town as counsel in civil cases, which is interesting, and criminal cases, when so requested by the town council. Then if you go into actually, I think it's in the administration of justice and under an ordinance, within I think chapter two, yes, under administration, it talks about prosecution of misdemeanors.
Do you think, where do you think they go? Is it just based on funding? How does the Commonwealth attorney pay more attorneys to come out and be chief of office? Is it based?
They're a, they're a, they're a comp, board of positions that's set by the state of Virginia. Unfortunately, unlike us, the sheriff's office, there are lots of too many positions and they have to pay certain salaries for those positions, the same thing with every state position there is. Unfortunately, the local level gets behind and that's the reason we're always battling that of trying to stay ahead. With Brad's, Brad's company, we would have one, two, up to three attorneys. With Commonwealth, we could have possibly up to seven attorneys. We've already been told we would have two dedicated attorneys at all times. But we could also call outside that if those attorneys have to get vacation or out of service.
Sometimes there are multiple officers, something in your group. They have three officers for one case.
How does this solve your problem of having, I'm saving overtime?
You would only be going to court once instead of twice.
Or.
Or, or even multiple more times. So if it's continued, which is, it's going to happen, to get continued. And you could be there on one case if you have two separate attorneys, four to six different times.
You're going to face. You know, business is on Main Street, I mean, pretty blind. I mean, compete or not, I mean, that's kind of where this is. We've got a better, better service where you have more attorneys. Not, I won't say better service, but.
It's not going to be better service. I honestly am telling you that me and Brad's been friends for thirty-two years. I have the utmost respect for him and he does me. And this, this is hard. He does it tonight because I'm taking beans off each table. But honestly, it's, it is going to be such a time savings for us and it's going to be a monetary savings for this town. Our guys get to court and they sit for hours upon hours. And we don't have but two per shift. So if you work tonight and you're supposed to work tomorrow, you have court tomorrow and you sit there at three o'clock, you will be back at six o'clock in the afternoon, is that your shift? How sad it is, that's just the realist, it's public, honestly. Oh, no, 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 the figure doesn't count the overtime. That's just the, that's just our fees.
And I say this much, and I'm not necessarily defensive of our firm necessarily in terms of the cost side of it. I don't know that this decision is going to affect the overtime. I don't, the way I've seen the courts work and the prosecution of felonies, misdemeanors, may or may not. I think where you'll see the difference is just with our billing, at our rate, we bill, we've been now billing, our rate is two twenty, it's two twenty-five, it's two twenty-five an hour. And so it's one where on the economies of scale, the Commonwealth attorney is eight attorneys. And they're funded through the state, through our tax dollars. So where I can afford the money they have, they can have their attorney down there for X number of dollars less than what we're, in a routine in terms of going through our standard docket continuances and when you actually have actual hearings and when you don't. You're like, wait, that rate, you're going to say, that dollar, I'm not going to argue with that, that's my understanding. Just in terms of like factually, monetarily, that's going to be the case. The overtime's another issue because we, our office hasn't had no control over that. We have control of the time, we're there or not. So therefore, what a time, if Commonwealth attorneys there or not, they may be spending the same amount of time, if not more than we do. But they're saying that they're going to do it for you for eight hundred dollars a month or we're charging twelve hundred dollars a month on average with our rates. And that's, that isn't, I won't say it's an irrefutable factor, it's probably the closest thing. It'll be an interesting thing to see when you actually look at your numbers in terms of how much you pay or paid in twenty-three or twenty-four and their overtime, actually what your budget was, and then you see that in twenty-five, does that changes for twenty-six? That'll be your real fair to take if the changing system by using one attorney's office helped them in their overtime hours. That's where I would see, really where you'd see the comparison to see, yes, this is a cost saving as well as an efficiency thing. Because it sounds like the other component Stan's arguing for. And I'll step on my own toes here. It's the efficiency side of when you're dealing with one attorney on having both felonies and misdemeanors. But that's been a system that's been in place since the beginning of Commonwealth. They've had that since the seventeen hundreds. You had the state prosecuted the felonies because you didn't deal with anything over twelve months in jail and the towns were responsible for the misdemeanor. And that's that way pretty much across Commonwealth.
What about your handover on, so if we went this route, how would your hand off to the Commonwealth attorney? Are the cases just, this is now yours?
And what we would do is, and as I've talked to Michael, is if anything that Michael has interest in, and I don't care what his interest is, whatever he has interest in or whatever he's already been to court on, we would want him to finish that up because I think he's entitled to that finishing across that finish line.
Yes. To answer that though, we haven't even, I know Michael and I talked this morning. He said as far as he knows, he is not on the calendar, on the docket to be in court next Thursday or this day tomorrow. What's next, what's next town day?
It's Evers.
It's every other one, yeah.
Every other Thursday, but I don't know which one.
Let's just say, he says, I'm not scared to be there because I haven't been told that I am going to need to be there. And we were going to keep it as clean as possible. And it would just strictly be whoever the Commonwealth attorney is, probably going to be Joey. At least that's what I was told. Was going to be ready to take him up?
John King.
So that was going to be the case.
But I also, I talked to Michael, Michael, if you have anything that you have value in or you've already, you've already put time into it, we would want you to get paid to complete that, that task. It's not just cutting the bill for, per se.
Well, and we've also offered, and that stock will still be there. If there's something, we have been in serving the town as law firm since nineteen sixty-six. This is a pride thing for us as much as anything in terms of what we've done for my predecessor, Mr. Horace. If there's something that comes up and they can't get ahold of somebody at one or two in the morning, kind of told them this, you call us. We are still going to serve the town because we are your attorney. And we will continue to do that. We won't appear in court. It won't be that we are going to be able to go through and do the prosecutions or whatever. But we're still going to be available any of the three of us and that's Stan's.
I'll say, I would like, maybe I think this time next year, if we go this route, to get a report on this to make sure it's working. And if we need to make a move, we can pivot and.
Well, you reappoint every year, so this will have to be one you'll have to, you'll need to look at this again as early as January.
Does it keep it cleaner to just have this done in January?
They want to start to accommodate. They're wanting to start this now and we get that.
Well, we can separate this moving forward between.
Like in the appointment in January?
The appointment in January.
That's up to you all. I think it's one where if you're going to go this route, you'll just have reappointing as town attorneys for civil matters.
Right.
Because there's nothing in the chart says you can't do that. It just says we're responsible for all civil and criminal matters. So I think what you would do is you'd say for civil matters, we're going to use Listby Hart, probably Tom's another. And for all criminal matters, we're going to use Tassau County Commonwealth Attorney's Office.
What do you think you want, that we can do? Go with it now or wait till January?
I think to accommodate what your, what your town police force is asking for. If you're going to do what you're doing now.
Well, that's what I'm saying because I made a motion.
We've got to say, where's the discussion? So any more?
I'm good.
Any more? So all in favor of making the change to send all criminal cases to Commonwealth Attorney's Office? Space up by Saturday night? All opposed, space up by Saturday night? All right, motion passed.
Can I get clarification if Michael, I cannot, I'm going to hurt you in a minute. Can I get clarification from council if Michael has interest, as I told him earlier, if he has interest in a case or any time put into a case, instead of just cutting him completely off, allow him, and he told me, I think there was only one or two cases that he had some kind of.
But I think that would kind of be understandable as anything new is moving, anything kind of old currently being worked with.
Misdemeanors take on a different life than felonies do in terms of this. They're much more finite in most situations. Sometimes there are things that can be continued over and require multiple hearings, but that's rare. So the only thing to qualify that motion, just that you are appointing, as if they're handling criminal cases, you're appointing the Tassau County Commonwealth Attorney's Office as your criminal attorney for the town. For all criminal matters involved in that.
And one follow-up, tomorrow is open house, eleven to.
We're getting to miscellaneous?
I'm sorry. I'm not signing up, Mayor.
So, okay, so moving right on, miscellaneous, my vision, I really am out for some reason.
Public access to public land. And one of the things we discussed previously, and I think we missed the mark a little bit, was exploring the option, of course, addressing any concerns that need to be addressed. Basically, I'm looking for how can we get night fishing, just like they do with Cabot's Creek, Adley County, Shire. I think we're going to have positive movement, have camping out there as we move forward. We'll talk to the insurance on that. I would love to see it this season. If we can't get it this season, then, you know, we have a game planned for next year. But if we have any concerns with it, there's, there's need to be addressed. Dave? Night fishing?
Yeah, I like, yeah, I've been saying that for years.
Chief, I know you had some concerns when we talked about it previously, but you can handle it?
What, what we will do is we, if that's what this council desires, we'll try it and then we'll make reports back if it's not working.
It's my thoughts.
Yeah, we need to upgrade town attorney.
Is that you check with your carrier just to make sure that there's not any insurance?
So Dan Yang, could you?
I'm just, I'm just saying, we've crossed this bridge, I know we've had this conversation before, so I'm always.
And we have, we have night fishing nights and I would say that.
Could you ask me a little about fishing?
And then of course, you know, DWR probably takes a role in this because there's time periods in which you can and cannot based on the stock and travel.
Got a question. The, the paper you sent out, sent, what do you use the paper for? There's this copper and stuff. Did everybody get that?
If you were served by galvanized or by lead, you received that paper. That's, that's from a health department requirement.
Would you mind calling Miss Hamblegola and I've heard about it?
You may be announced trouble.
Okay, so I thought we were talking about fishing.
The storm down here.
All right, so fishing, we announce contact person. And see what, what we can, see what their thoughts are on it for seven days a week, come out and see. And see what, what we can, see what their thoughts are on it for seven days a week throughout the season. So there's nothing else about that, we'll jump, uh, just like the Mount of Main Street moments is Friday, July twenty-fifth, is the car show and concert at.
Hey, I was gonna get up at the end.
Oh, well, she didn't say that. Oh, are you signed in?
I did sign in.
I will not steal your fun.
Okay.
So I've got a couple of questions for you, do whatever. So your job, you gotta post it.
Which one?
Look, I'm not calling the economic director, but. Hey, you got a minute?
I've got six, but, but, I've got seven.
So when's the deadline?
I didn't. But I do have interviews starting next week.
Okay. So I hear the recreation director resigned?
Recreation director resigned last week.
So what are you thinking on that?
Thinking we're gonna hire a new recreation director.
Do we want to?
As opposed to.
You're paying a recreation director for a, a year-round job, and basically all they're doing is to pull. And then the off-season, what are they really doing to get paid? I mean, we don't run programs for the kids anymore.
I do know they have to mark the lines instead of the fields, the way the program needs it to be.
We wanna pay the directors, pay the marking line?
They are.
But do we want to?
You tell me.
Well, I think it needs to be discussed.
Is it that you wanna get rid of that spot, or is it that you wanna get more out of it?
Somebody needs to, to be in a leadership role, but a recreation director paying year-round, and we're not, you know, it's not like before when we ran all the kids program.
I, I, one of, one of the, one of the flyers you sent me, if you look at Woodville West, wasn't it? Their recreation department's putting on a kids program. I do think it's one of those things that we can increase the effectiveness and efficiency of what they do by putting those obligations on, hey, we've got night fishers, we have catfishers. You know, there are, it's gonna be, I, I, I do see the need for the position, but I do see the need to revisit what requirements and expectations are. If we're not happy with the new program with the line, I think Elijah's a great individual, and I think, uh, but can we get more? I'm, I'm after more.
Brad and I, years ago, when our programs were with the recreation department.
Same?
Nah, he didn't do basketball, he did baseball. But me and Brad go back, you know, we had so many more kids, and, and you told them to competition, and you told them at the end of the day that we're still friends, but you told them to competition. The one MCA, to me, they want the notoriety running that program, but I can't say they do a good job of it. They just want the notoriety running, and they're not teaching our kids anything, I mean, skill-wise.
You don't have any development programs in this town outside of Little League football.
Yeah.
Well, I take that back, Little League football, what is the baseball, those two?
Baseball, you have, you have a group of parents that care about it, so you got a group of kids.
Well, they're not proud about the wine.
Yeah.
And I'm not knocking the wife for what they do, participation leagues are great, but they, they killed, the wine killed our development of basketball in this town, it's gone. And until you bring it back with a rec department that builds with a competitive league to teach, not just go out and participation, you're not gonna see another competitive, very competitive team come out of Tasman High School for years to come. It's not gonna happen.
And I'm, I'm, heck, you know, talking about the comprehensive plan because that's, that's the laser focus on, I think we should have for the upcoming years, and we looked at recreation tourism, and we should start to help. And, you know, to say that we're gonna focus on those things and then next, our recreation director, I, I think it's the opposite direction we should be going.
Well, I'm not saying, but if he's just gonna strike lines and run the pole.
Cut grass. When, when.
I thought like that, as a skilled position.
When, when he lost, when he lost Richard as the recreation director, and at the same time, I'm asking the same question. And time they had that time, I lost my best carpenter, I lost my best. It's not a, not a recreation director position, there's still a lot of these still are happening. But that response to that loss at that time told me that we don't have the right focus. We're more concerned about leading, and really skill, general labor than a recreation record, and we don't have the right focus for that part. And I would love, like, this is an opportunity, it's an obstacle right now, but it's an opportunity to refocus, re-engage what that department's doing.
Uh, I just, we probably didn't talk about the next move, after move will see.
You gonna hire one for them next month?
Well, after next month, before season will be over, so there's that one.
If that's what I'm signing, I mean, I wouldn't unless you do.
How, how does the pool continue without that individual there?
Do you have, do you have a second, man?
Not exactly, we have someone that is full-time staff, um, that does a lot of the maintenance. And that person can help assist, but, um.
You don't think they can do the job, Mike?
Which job, the director job?
Is that being, it might be an injury?
I don't, I don't know that they can do it all.
Do it all, but strike lines and run the pole?
No, cut the grass and get the trash, check the lake, do the pool.
Well, look, the grass cutting's gonna come under control because we have the groups of, these certain parts of the town, so we don't.
This is where the restaurant's.
They got set up schedules too, don't they?
This person runs the outdoor and the pool. In fact, I wasn't sure.
I had those working out there, and I have to be with them, to Johnson.
In which, in which position?
He's doing, he's doing, he's working on the grass.
There's Rodney?
Rodney, oh, great. He's a hard worker.
And he's the one that's gonna be out there.
And, you know, he asked, I asked him, I said, I don't think there's some rats here working, it's just him out.
That's what I'm saying, I don't know if, if he can do the.
Definitely understanding, I don't know, it warrants a lot more discussion, but we can talk about this a minute.
Yeah, let's move on.
Next on this lane is the police department, open house, eleven to one tomorrow?
Oh, you told me to be quiet.
Yes, sir.
Eleven to one.
Yes, sir, we are super happy, uh, eleven to one tomorrow, we're gonna be ready to cut in at eleven. Uh, I have sent out invitations to all kinds of folks, uh.
Except us, of course.
He's so rotten, anyways. Um, I don't know if Chambers wanted to be here or not, um, I did send up one, haven't heard anything about it. Yes, eleven to one, uh, we're gonna recruit and some, some goodies there, and we're gonna do a tour, and. That's to one, that's to two, is what I said. If you put till two o'clock, I'm gonna kill him, it's.
It's till two?
It's till two o'clock, Susan was telling me one, but I knew it was two, thank you, Susan.
Okay.
Susan corrected me, it is till two, I apologize.
Any council members, or if you can make it, please come on.
Yes, please come on.
I'm sorry.
I, I knew somebody that was working.
So, uh, we're gonna move on, some miscellaneous public comments?
Yes, sir.
How many?
Uh, you have two, you have, uh, Mr. Matthew Shane Munsey.
Good. So if you'll come up, I'll state your name and address, and you're limited to three minutes?
Yes, it's a pleasure being here in front of you all. Thank you, Brad, for telling me a little about the edit there, I'll keep it brief. Uh, we have a tender farm here, less than three miles. Mr. Purry Farm on the other side, there's the, uh, lake there that we could fish at. I thought about doing a membership, keeping the coast knit, then again, I thought about, you know, going overnight, certain nights out of the month. Uh, there's, I mean, the opportunities are endless, right now I'm doing it all by myself. I haven't, I haven't been quick to charity yet, I may start sending out some, you know, crowdfunding or seek support with growing. I just now purchased some marketing for the tables that we noodle and have beehives, just provide money for them. So a few ways to already make up the, the fund of farm. I haven't asked anyone, like, hey, can I have some money for the farm? I don't wanna have to do that right now at this stage. Right now, we've got ends, it's just started laying, and we've got the fishing pond there for tourism, we're right at exit one. Talked about having signage, that we can promote certain businesses right there at exit one, right next to four sixty. We're part of a few grants that we're waiting to receive information back on regarding the catalyzing agriculture grant program, which is through Edwards Mother Earth Foundation, and Virginia Tech, MC State, uh, Aplastic Soil Development, Nature Conservancy, that's how the, quite a few nonprofits are all logged in, come in and beautify the right along the foreland, or the property, the edge of the property there, right at the fairgrounds, exit across from Memphis Hall. So that property's there, we don't have a right of way once we do, if we do, that'll be in town limits, right on that part of the park. Currently, you go down to the period edition, if you know where Sheriff, Sheriff, right high it is, it's two houses down. There's a road right there, so just keep that in mind for brainstorm, create a reach out to me if you have ideas, that y'all would like to do something on weekends, a certain event, you know, my grandfather used to have all the teachers down at the end of the year, they'd party down, Jerry Purry.
Jerry Purry?
It's Jerry Purry's state.
Thank you.
That's my grandfather, he raised me more or less.
Oh, okay. That, that side of the road would be county, the right, can I get a right of way for that?
Right at exit one, I believe that's.
It's on, on that side of, of the fairgrounds, that is county, everything on that side is county.
Is it, do you hear you get some McDonald's to that seat?
Well, any, from fairgrounds towards Cedar Bluff is.
Oh, I can get you that way, right, sure, sure, okay.
West, west side directions.
Man, so that would be, to look at it right on the map, it hooks the line, we may have just a small portion. So thank you all for, uh, having me, I wasn't prepared to, I didn't think I was gonna be presenting tonight, I've been out there just taking notes, I'd like to see you all tomorrow over at eleven AM. Like I mentioned before, if you brainstorm, if there's a certain, I look forward to working with Dodge, EBA. I said on this meeting yesterday, uh, John, Zach, we're gonna apologize for each of you out there, who all been talking, all of you guys, Little State is five, Roops, Fox, these, you got space for, everything you work down.
So who's, who's next, Dominic?
You have Emily Colmes Davis.
Name, address.
Emily Colmes Davis, I'm the executive director of Tasman Today, Tasman Today's address is at one sixty Main Street. So I was hoping to tell you about Fall Gotten Flyers, we have the Jackie Atkins Memorial Cruisin' coming up on July twenty-fifth as part of Main Street Moments, and we also have Main Street Moments coming up on July twenty-sixth. So I just wanted you all to be aware of it, if you know anybody that's interested, wants to put their car and cruise in, whatever car you want for me, um, you know anybody that wants to be a vendor, wants to do anything on the Main Streets, um, I just contacted someone, well, I won't tell you about that, but it could be really fun. But I don't know if they're gonna be available, so.
What's the vendor fee?
The vendor fee for a standard spot, which is a ten by twenty spot, is fifty dollars. So, and would you have, if government entity, who will wait that discount code that I can give you? So, and I can give you all, all of the what's signups, but I don't know if you all saw the fourth July event? It was amazing, how they could.
Oh, yeah, that is a lot of people.
There were a ton of people, I was very impressed with the amount of people that came out, I wasn't expecting that many people, so.
We got a lot of this baseball team's interested too, to come out there.
Yeah.
If that worked out really well.
There were several that, while we were setting up, several that came to want to go up to Luke Purry's building, it's like, can't go up right now. There's, uh, having some large explosives up there. But yeah, I, I thought it was a great event on, um, the third, so. Any questions for me? The, the band on Friday night is, I'm really excited about them, they're called Cotton and the Bog, and the guy that leads them, his name is Gene Farr, and he was inducted into the Carolina Beach Music Hall thing in twenty sixteen. So I, I, I go on with the Cruisin', always love to have the beach night band, unfortunately they're not performing anymore, so I'm trying to still keep that feel, so hopefully everybody comes out.
So you wait to go to Whitfield and talk to them about, oh, band's leaving again?
What's that? Oh, well, in Whitfield, with their?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I will certainly try to get down there, yes. I know they bring in a bunch to their, um, they have theater down there now.
So, that's, I like.
They do that at Marion too, Marion has theater down there as well, that they bring a bunch of bands in.
Hopefully get someone.
Hey, you give me the budget, and I'll get them.
So we had Fourth Fridays last month, this.
We had Fourth Friday, yes. Fourth Friday, yeah, that's right, because the Fourth Friday this month does fall on the Jackie Atkins Cruisin'. Uh, we will have a Fourth Friday in August, and I've checked, there's not a football game on that Fourth Friday. It's actually August twenty-second, um, so we'll have something going on then, and it'll be insane, just block off that small part. Um, you know, we're trying it out to see how it goes, to at least have something on Main Street.
So did it go okay, or did you need to hold straight?
I, I mean, I think that it went pretty well. Um, there was, there was maybe like fifty to seventy-five people that came out, but I think that everybody came out, had a good time, you know, they brought their chairs, they sat, watched the band dance. People went into the restaurants, and then I checked with, um, clothing palette, she had a couple of lookers come into her shop. So I would really like to have the people come in, you know, I would like to have all of the businesses standing up in the lane so everybody could go into the business.
Right.
So, we're trying it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-huh.
So, uh, almost done, council member comments?
Much to your favor.
Second.
I'll say for your next, uh, what's in it?
Have one more thing here.